Welcome, everybody, to the September 9th Maricopa Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Let's start with roll call. Rosalie, if you do that to make sure we have a quorum here to meet.
Chairman Arnett.
Here.
Vice Chairman Schwart.
Here.
Commissioner Lindblum. Commissioner Grass.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Schlosser.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner, yep, thank you. Commissioner Montoya. And Commissioner Dan Zeissin.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you for that, appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. We are a little delayed between fire alarms and different things in the county building. We're back here virtually. This is a virtual meeting. This meeting has been noticed, a few announcements before we begin. It's been noticed in accordance with open meeting laws ARS 38-431, and the agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa Planning and Developing Office, and also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at maricopa.gov/planing. And each of these reports prepared by staff, they'll become part of the permanent record for each case. This is a virtual hearing, so it's a little different than in person, so we do have record of those that wish to speak on each of these agenda items. If you did not notify staff in advance, that's fine. We do want to hear from all those that are wanting to speak and be a part of this public process, so raise your hand or send a comment and let us know, and we'll make sure we ask to hear from you. I'm guessing on some of these cases, we'll have several people, we already have some people that wish to speak, so what we're going to do, just in the interest of time, we have all the reports, we have your letters, we have your cases, and we have been reading lots and lots of information, so we'll give the applicant, let's try and keep that close to 10 minutes for presentation of whatever you'd like to present, maybe hitting on the more recent things or things of interest, but we do have all the information that you've submitted, and then all those that would wish to speak on that case, if we could keep those comments to three minutes and if staff would help us out, and we'll just make sure we give everyone the opportunity to speak. So, let's keep in those timeframe, and if we do that, I think we can get through these before dinnertime. That's a joke, I hope. So, anyway, and then, of course, we'll give the applicant a little time after that everyone else has had a chance to speak. So, with that in mind, I think those are the announcements. What we'll do is, at the end of each case, we'll do a roll call vote, because this is virtually one at a time, and Rosalie will help us with that. So, next on our agenda will be the approval of minutes. This is for the July 8th and the July 22nd hearings. Are there any comments or questions from the commission on either of these?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion for approval.
Great, and we don't really need a motion, but since you've made one, why not? Let's do it. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second, Commissioner McGee.
And we're going to do this audibly, I know we do it one by one, but all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
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 Anybody say nay?
So, for the record, I heard nothing, I see no comments, I think those minutes unanimously are passed. So, let's continue on now to our consent agenda. If staff would please present those two cases on the consent agenda, we'll follow the agenda as been presented, no changes to the order.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, we have two items on consent. There's Z 2020-099, known as All Trucks Auto Parts in District 5. This is a zone change to Industrial 3 IUPD for a large truck repair and sales business on two acres located southwest of the southwest corner of 35th Avenue and Broadway. The recommendation in paragraph 14 is for approval of subject conditions A through H. And Z 2021-058, known as the Llewellyn 1.25 Industrial in District 2, this is a zone change to Industrial 2 IUPD for a contractor's yard on one and a quarter acres located east of the southeast corner of Hawes and Mesquite in the Mesa area. The recommendation in paragraph 14 is for approval of subject conditions A through I. That concludes the consent agenda, sir.
Thank you very much. Any questions on either of these two cases on our consent agenda, or comments, clarifications? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Great, for the record, that sounded like Mr. Grass as a motion. I can't see everyone on my screen, I apologize. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner McGee.
Thank you, oh, that was helpful. So, there's a motion, there's a second. Rosalie, would you do a vote for the consent agenda?
Commissioner Grass.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeissin?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Schwart? Did we lose Vice Chair Schwart?
Yes. I'm having difficulty with my microphone, and it's not on my end, just for the record, but I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. And Chairman Arnett?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval of the consent agenda by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Rosalie, appreciate that. You know, we've been doing this long enough virtually, we probably should have, long time ago, gotten some signals like baseball players, we could do a lot of this just with signals, but maybe that's too late, because that's behind us. Well, thank you for that, moving on to our regular agenda.
Hard to have that in the record, it's hard to have that in the record, Mr. Chairman. Karen would have to have, Chairman has just signaled for a hit and run, you know, it's...
Right, stealing signs, right. I like this, anyway, let's get back on track, we have a lot to do here. Moving on to our regular agenda, if you'd please present the first case.
Jose is muted.
That you, Jose, at number three, Montana Tractor and Plow?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and Commissioners.
You bet.
Good morning. Case Z 2021-007 is for Montana Tractor and Plow Company in the Supervisor District 3. The site is generally located approximately 350 feet east of the northeast corner of Happy Valley Road and the 11th Avenue alignment in the Phoenix area. The site is approximately 4.7 acres, and the request includes the following: a zone change from Rural 43 to C3 CUPD. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site in order to allow the existing use of the property, which is equipment, sales, and service of tractors and other agricultural implements. The applicant has also applied for a commercial unit plan of development overlay as part of the zone change in order to request certain variations to the development standards and to restrict the uses on the site to only allow farm-related equipment rentals and sales. Next slide, and if we could skip to the one with the front of the building, one more, please. There we go. There is an active violation on the property for, one, the existing use of the land without the proper zoning entitlement, and, two, development of the site without the benefit of issued construction permits. Staff has received seven letters of opposition representing eight individuals and 24 letters of support. Seven of the opposition letters are from residents located within 300 feet of the subject site, and generally, the opposition's concerns are about the business generating excessive noise, traffic and dust, privacy concerns from the business activity adjacent to their residences. The applicant has worked with, has met with the community and worked with them and staff to craft certain conditions to address some of the opposition's concerns. The CUPD overlay is being applied to, one, restrict the use of the site, two, require eight-foot-high screen walls with a 10-foot landscape buffer, and, three, provide pavement to address dust controls, and those are conditions C through F on the report. And since the publishing of the staff report, the applicant has provided some additional letters of support. I believe one came in this morning, that's not included in the handout, and from what staff was able to gather, most of that support is in the area. There's a couple of sites I was able to verify that are adjacent to the site, however, we didn't have the time to update any of the GIS maps to show the location of the support. The staff analysis found that the surrounding area is partially undeveloped with uses comprised of a mix of low-density, single-family residential, low-intensity commercial uses, and light industrial uses. The site is accessed via an arterial road. The City of Phoenix provided comments and found that the use is consistent with the City of Phoenix's general plan, and the city did not oppose the request. Additionally, the site is a part of a four parcel annexation request to the City of Phoenix. Staff is of the opinion that the use is consistent with the development patterns in the area, and that the proposed C3 CUPD zoning is appropriate. There are, however, concerns with the current development of the site. The property owner has continued to develop the site without zoning entitlement or building clearances despite receiving the violation notification in November of 2019, and efforts by staff to bring the site into compliance by extending compliance deadlines and suspending fees while the site received the, obtained the appropriate entitlements or applied for them. The property owner has continued to exacerbate the noncompliance on the site contrary to the direction of staff. Next slide. All right, so the following aerials kind of show since, in late November, when this site received the violation, that, you know, despite being aware of the violation and having talked to staff, the development on the site has steadily progressed. Next slide, please. With, you know, the property owner was aware that what you see here is a patneasement, however, it was designated as employee parking only, so it restricted the use of the patneasement to the adjacent property owners. If you see on the aerial on the left side of the image, the aerial actually captured that parking area actively being used, and, of course, the image shows that there's a walkway setup leading up to that patneasement. Next slide, please. Next slide. All right, and then with this one, the, since this was included in the staff report, the applicant did provide the permit to access this water meter. They had the permit to access this water meter for dust control purposes from September of 2019 to September of 2020. There was a lapse, but the permit was renewed September 2nd, and that is valid through September of 2022. Next slide, please. All right, and this, of course, the applicant stated that this is where the water would be pumped to, to be used for dust control purposes. The reason for the conditions is that while the land use is appropriate for the site, the City of Phoenix commented that they, that this use is appropriate, it's a, they would consider it C2 under the City of Phoenix land use plan, and the development patterns in the area seem to align with these types of uses. There are some light industrial uses in the area, and there is just some general friction with industrial uses and commercial uses infilling in an area that was a mix of low-density residential. But for the reasons outlined in the report, the staff is recommending the commission motion for approval of Case Z 2021 as conditional zoning per MCZO Article 304.6 with a plan of development and commercial construction permits to be completed within six months of board approval, or the zoning may be considered for revocation. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose, appreciate that report. There's a lot of good work done in this report. I just had one question before I asked the commission. The other parcels that are part of it, do we know anything about this application for annexation and the other properties, are they all commercial? Do we know, or is that just, I know that's not in the purview of what we're doing, but it's, I'm just, it gives me some context. Do we know anything more about that annexation case?
I am not aware of what the use is on the other three parcels, I didn't receive those parcel numbers. The application to annex was received by the City of Phoenix, I believe, in August. There is a kind of unique situation in which they are trying to annex, but they have the active violation, and so the only way to address the violation and then potentially annex is to either receive the entitlements to bring the site into compliance and then building permits and the approved plan of development, or return the site to its natural state and then process the annexation with the City of Phoenix. And so, there's just a couple aspects.
Yeah, well, it's interesting, I appreciate it, I know you're recommending approval, but I, from a lack of a better description, the way I read this report is, yes, we're recommending approval, but we're going to hold our nose while we do it. But, but let's do this, any questions for staff right now? Clarifications on this case?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Grass.
I have to say, this is a very unusual staff report. I understand kind of the posture of staff here in trying to kind of make things move along, as the chairman mentioned. Is it your sense that, that this applicant has been a bad actor?
Well, all we can say is, we know there's a violation case, that's why we're here right now, right? That's where we're at. Mr. Ellsworth, would you like to weigh in on that?
Sure, let me weigh in just a little bit. So, there is a violation on the case, but there is a compliance agreement. The applicant needs to come into compliance with the zoning code. The first step to come into compliance would be to get the zoning in order. We can't get the zoning in order, they're just going to be out of compliance. So, before we can go to the next step and work with them on the site issues and the building permit issues, we have to have the zoning question answered. That's why we're here before you today. The reason for the tone of the staff report is that apprehension that things haven't progressed very well to date, and we are conditioning it to six months to get the other things in order. If not, we would be back for provocation of that zoning. That's why we're recommending the conditional zoning on this property, to incentivize the property owner to continue to work with us on compliance for the property.
Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that. On page six of the staff report, I just wanted to make sure I'm capturing this, there was an original violation notification in November 2019, and the property owner applied for a pre-application meeting in May of 2020, and was advised to rezone. And even after that meeting, it appeared that nothing happened until the next year, and during that time, the property owner continued to, quote, "exacerbate the noncompliance on the site contrary to direction of staff and contrary to the proposed project information contained in the narrative report," end quote. And then there is an additional site inspection that occurred last month that continues to show that the site is extracting water without known consent from a nearby fire hydrant, which may affect fire services in the area. That seems fairly egregious to me, that you could potentially be jeopardizing the safety of a nearby community by siphoning water off of a fire hydrant. I mean, this seems fairly egregious. I, and quite frankly, I'm alarmed at the behavior of this applicant. We have rules in place to help all of us work together and share land together and share neighborhoods together, and it just seems like a continual march toward doing whatever this applicant wants to do with the parcel of land irrespective of the rules we have in place as a functioning society. So, I know that seems like a soapbox moment, but this is, I'm fairly alarmed at the findings of staff here.
So, let's do that. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Grass. I think this is what I'd like to do, and I would invite the commission also to remember that whatever's happened in the past, what we're here today is to talk about zoning. We're not here to talk about what's, now, if it's meant to be this zoning in the future, that's really what we're talking about today. But to your point, and to some of the concerns we have, and that's why the conditions are so the way they are, what I'd like to do is, if the applicant is on the line, I don't know if it's you, Brian, or someone else, there's been some additional discussions and some late information that's come in, and Brian, before you bring your presentation, or who's ever there, is the applicant with us on the line? You just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, for your record, my name is Brian Greathouse. My address is 1850 North Central Avenue with the law firm Burch and Cracchiolo.
Thank you, thank you, Brian, for being here today. Oh, go ahead, did you want to, because I just wanted a question before you begin your presentation, but did you have a question?
Yeah, is it okay if I clear the record real quick? Because I was engaged in this early, I think it was February 2020, and there was existing violations that we met with the county on, and we entered into a compliance agreement that required us to hit certain critical dates. And we had our pre-app meeting with the county of May that year, and then one of the comments was to approach City of Phoenix and explore annexation. So, we then, in August that year of 2020, we met with, we went through the rezoning pre-app process with the city, and then a month later, we went through the site plan pre-app process with the city. Thereafter, we determined, they wanted us to engage surrounding properties to annex a larger area rather than just one property. At that time, there were no properties adjacent to us that wanted to annex in. So, what we did was, we went back to the county and we filed their zone change application, but before we could do that, we had to hire an architect, we had to survey the property to show what improvements were already out there, and we had to get topography on the site, and we had to engage a civil engineer, all of which took time, all of which occurred during the year of COVID, where nobody was working in their offices, and it was really hard to get things done. So, it took us until the early 2021 to file our application, and we went through a three review process with county staff, and we had three separate meetings with neighbors, one was virtual, and two were held out there on the site. To clear the record, between the 2020 aerial and the 2021 aerial, the only differences between those two are that Sean, the owner, laid down ABC on the whole site, and also laid down ABC on 9th Avenue to cut down on the dust issues. He also installed this concrete pad, which he shouldn't have done, but the ABC was a request from the neighbors in our first virtual neighborhood meeting that said, "You have dust all over your site, how can you keep that down for us?" And the ABC was part of that solution that he promised the neighbors he would do. And he also told them that his employees would no longer park on 9th Avenue. So, after that first virtual neighborhood meeting, no neighbors or no employees parked on 9th Avenue, but those employee parking-only signs stayed there, however, there was no parking. So, I hope that clears up a little bit about what we've been through and the challenges and hoops we've had to jump through.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and before this gets too far away, can I just kind of get back to our original thing, and maybe I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Schwart. But, Brian, I fully understand, the reason we're here today is to clean this up, right? That's what we're doing here today. We, I don't want to get too focused on that, but as it relates to zoning, there have been some commissioners, based on what's provided, that say, "Wow, I don't, we just got some recent information," and they haven't had time to go through it, and so, Mr. Schwart, maybe you can speak to that, Commissioner McGee, but now would be the time to express. And then, if we decide after that, we'll just give the applicant time to present his case, if that's the case.
Yeah, I thought Mr. Greathouse had a question, so if we could, let's let Commissioner Kate Brophy McGee go first, and I'll go second, thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is not get too far into this, because it'll, we'll have a lot of questions, but I just wanted to simply set the table a little bit. Commissioner McGee, if you would mind sharing some of your feelings, this is your district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Ellsworth kind of put me on track for what we're trying to do here. I did not like the late submission of information that occurred late yesterday afternoon, including apparently documentation from the City of Phoenix that granted access to the fire meter for dust control, which is really interesting. They've had that for two, now, three years. There was, of course, a lapse in between renewing that permit, but the complaints I'm reading from the neighbors are, there's continuous dust, a continuous dust. In the letter of application, Mr. Greathouse wrote, they said that the employee hours were limited to 8:00 in the morning to 5:30. Well, the neighbors are saying they're there all night long, 3:00 AM in the morning, waking up, waking us up, shining lights, doing all these things. This is a massive case of beg forgiveness as opposed to ask permission, even after you are said, told that you need to ask permission and beg forgiveness. So, I'm willing to suggest a continuation in this case for two reasons. One is to have the opportunity to actually review the form support letters that we received, they were all forms, they were all signed, identical letters signed by people purportedly living in the area or businesses purportedly operating in the area. I think there need to be more guardrails built into any kind of continuance that is allowed, or I'm comfortable proceeding to an up or down vote, as you see fit.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McGee, and Mr. Greathouse, just, I wanted to just, you can determine what the feel of the support is on this case by those comments, but I at least wanted to give you the opportunity before we went here. We're prepared to hear your case, to vote on this today, but I wanted to let you just hear some of the conversations we've had with these commissioners, in case you wanted a little more time to perhaps address some of these concerns and some meetings and some education. I realize that what we're here today is to clean up the very thing that has been a problem, but I'll let you to, you decide. Commissioner McGee has suggested a little more time of continuance, this is up to you, sir, and if you would like to entertain that, I'll let you speak to that, or you could go ahead and present your case, that is, and that's where we'll go.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Schwart.
I apologize, I think it's very important, if you would let me go first, I had asked if I could speak right after, before, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I'll be very brief. Brian, I'm strongly urging you to continue this case. As you can tell, there's a lot of things going on with it. I absolutely agree with Commissioner Grass's platform, I think he's 100% correct in what he has spoke about, and also with Kate Brophy McGee, and so, I would just tell you that I'm strongly urging you to continue the case and request that you do that. Thank you.
So, I think you've, so, Brian, I think, oh, my goodness, yes, Commissioner McGee.
I'm officially, can you see I'm taller, I'm on my soapbox. The continuance would be to construct additional requirements and guardrails on any kind of zoning that we grant, that we might conceivably grant going forward, so that would be part of my motion to continue. I want to give county officials more tools in the toolbox, I'd like to see Montana Tractor and Plow have more skin in the game, quote unquote, and I... And I really, really want to clear up what in the heck is going on with the City of Phoenix application. So it would not come back, Mr. Greathouse, in, if, in my preference, as the same proposal. It would have additional guidelines and guardrails.
So thank you. I appreciate those comments from the commission. Now, this is a little unorthodox, but I, I think it was important to share that. Mr. Greathouse, I'll let you comment to that. This is your case. We are prepared to hear this. You've, you've, you've heard the feel from some of our commission and, but if, if you want to climb that hill now or continue, this is up to you. We'll now hear your case and your thoughts. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners McGee, Grass, and Swart, all, all great comments. Are my clients okay with continuing this case and okay with your suggestions? He definitely wants to do things right, and he knows he's made some mistakes in the past. If it's okay with you, I would like to make a presentation because there's a lot of information that wasn't included in the staff report, and we took a lot of time to put together in the PowerPoint, that I think will be very helpful for this commission. And at the end of that, if, if continuance is the way that you all choose to go, we're perfectly fine with that, but we'd like to give a presentation just to give some information to this commission and hopefully clear up the water issues.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Peck.
I just would like to point out to council that if he makes a presentation, Right. the absent commission members, you will be asking them to review the record, which they may or may not have an opportunity to do. So you could run into an issue where the membership, the next time this comes up, is markedly different, and there could be issues as to how many people are eligible to vote. You may just want to consider that before you decide if you want to address the continuance now or go forward with your presentation.
Thank you for that, Mr. Peck. And, and Brian, this is, this is interesting in that you can see the passion here. Any, any PowerPoint or any presentation can be done individually, can be done, we can do that. But, but I'll let you make that decision. That is, that's a great point by Mr. Peck. I'll let you decide that, but if you feel it's, you'd like to continue, we'll.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
I would say that this also gives all of the people then an opportunity to speak if he does a formal presentation, so I'm adamantly against that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I also echo Commissioner Swart's comments. I, I've, this is, this is an application that just isn't ready, and I'm not inclined to give the applicant, I do not support giving the applicant a time to, to present on a flawed application at this point.
Got you. Okay, and I appreciate those comments. However, this is a public meeting, and he has the right to present should he want to, and that's his case, so I'll leave that decision. Well, Mr. Greathouse, this is your decision.
Mr. Chairman, I move to lay this Z2021001, or 007 on the table. I move to table this.
Mr. Chairman, we are.
It's always in order, and it's not debatable.
Say that again, Mr. Peck.
It's, it's a motion to table, it's not debatable, and it's always in order. So my question is.
Okay, motion to table, is there a second to that motion?
I'll go ahead and.
I believe Mr. Swart seconded. There's no debate, but if a, if a board member has a question to raise as a point of personal privilege, he or she is certainly free to do that.
Okay, so there's a motion, and then there's a motion, and there's a second.
Mr. Chairman, point of personal privilege, this is Commissioner McGee. Is it to a date certain, to a time certain? When does it come off the table? This meeting or another meeting?
It would be delayed. I assume that it would be delayed until the chairman brings it back. The chairman could bring it back at any meeting, but it would be tabled for this meeting.
It, okay, a motion that is tabled comes off the table by vote of the commission. So any commissioner can bring it up at any time. Because of open public meeting laws, I would recommend that if a commissioner is going to propose that it come off the table at a particular meeting, that staff be advised so that the agenda can so reflect that.
Okay, so I need to be, I need to be coached through this, because now there's a motion to table, there's been a second, we need to vote on that. I think the applicant's okay continuing it, and I think had we gone back, we could probably clean this up, but as it is now, this is where we're at. This is now tabled. We do need to take a roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes, I did see, though, Darren, I think had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Darren.
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering if it might be easier for most of us online to understand if the motion was for just an indefinite continuance, we have a new public notice before it comes back for the B and Z.
Okay, there's a procedural problem with that, and that is a motion for continuance is actually in action. So unless the applicant consents, it would not be in order until he has made whatever presentation he wishes to make, which is why I believe Commissioner Grass went to a motion to table, which is always in order. You, the chairman could ask the maker and the seconder of the motion to withdraw their motion until you ask the applicant if he's going to consent now to a continuance in light of what he's heard, and then you could do it to a date specific. We are deep in the Robert's Rules weeds right now, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, my goodness, yes. And, and I, I don't want to overcomplicate this. I think what I'm hearing is, let's push back, let's talk about it. So my question is this, in an effort to ask the applicant if they, because I think it will be pretty clear, but in an effort, would, would that motion to table and second to table be rescinded in order to speak with the applicant about an indefinite continuance? Or, or no?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to throw another one at you. I call the question, please.
So that's a no. We vote. Rosalie, would you call for a roll call vote? The motion is, Mr. Peck, did you want to weigh in? You're on mute, can't hear you.
A motion to call the question is really a motion to end debate, and since there is no debate on a motion to table, there's no need to call the question. You asked Mr. Commissioners Grass and Swart if they would withdraw. They have not indicated they're doing that, so the proper procedure is just to proceed to a vote on the motion to table.
Okay, let's vote. Rosalie, would you call for a vote, please?
Commissioner Grass?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Slasher?
I thought I've seen it all until today, but yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison? Commissioner Dan Zeison? I believe that's a yes. Vice Chair Swart?
Yes, and I want to briefly explain my vote. We should not even be in this situation. Mr. Greathouse and his developers should not have asked to do a presentation, knowing that then the public would be able to speak and we'd be doing something we politely asked them to not do, so my answer is yes.
And Chairman Arnett?
No.
Chairman, that's a vote of six to one to a motion to table.
Perfect, thank you very much. I can explain my vote later, but I don't need to. We are now, that is tabled, and I'm going to have to get some coaching how to, how to represent that, how we proceed, but we'll do that another time, another day, and that'll be another phone call. So on we move to agenda item number four.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are we losing our quorum in forty minutes?
That is correct. No, we'll have six people. We have seven commissioners now, we'll have six out of eleven.
Thank you.
And please, if anyone does have to leave and we lose our quorum, please, please let us know. But, all right, agenda item number four.
Yes, good morning, Chairman Arnett and members of the commission. Agenda item number four is for TA 2018001, which is an applicant-proposed tax amendment for off-site signage, known as billboards also. This tax amendment was previously discussed at the June 17, 2021 zipper meeting, and was continued at the commission level to allow the applicants more time to address concerns and to revise the proposed language as you see today. However, just to note, in case some of you don't know, this tax amendment proposal has been around for about three years now, with many revisions, proposed texts being reviewed, stakeholder and zipper meetings held, and the entire amendment being indefinitely continued back in 2019 until early this year, when the applicant came back with a new language. The most current version that you see, and we'll go over today in the, on the slides here, you know, is included in the slides today, and, and also without taking too much of your time, you know, I know there's, the applicant has a presentation as well, and we'll go over a lot of these language details. We have some, you know, citizens that want to speak on this matter as well. So I'll go through the major changes, you know, since the last zipper meeting, and we'll give staffs, you know, perspective for support of the proposed language, what the recommended changes, as discussed with paragraph 12 of the staff report. So now looking at the first slide, the proposed changes, section 201, definitions are shown here. The applicant has added language since the last zipper meeting to the first definition that would prohibit new billboards on future freeways within the county. We have some language kind of changes to that that we're recommending in paragraph 12 as well, just to kind of clarify that. But this slide also, you know, contains scenic corridor language, which would include both the regulatory overlay districts within the zoning ordinance, as well as the policy document scenic overlays as well. And this is important to note, since the applicant is proposing that no billboards are to be allowed within said scenic corridor areas with, with this tax amendment. Next slide, please. Okay, so these are more definitions included with this proposal. Includes static and digital billboard definitions, but also includes, you know, proposed changes to section 1112.7.1 of the zoning ordinance that speaks to bottom mounted lighting to be in conformance with Article 1112.3.2, which speaks to regarding top-down, fully shielded lighting. So although staff agrees with this part of the proposal, we do see issues with requiring conformance within six years if the TA is approved for signs, you know, considering signs that can meet legal non-conforming standards. So staff does recommend revised language, again in paragraph 12 of the staff report, that would require downward lighting for any new or altered signage at the time of permitting, and thus not conflicting with existing signs that can obtain legal non-conforming status. Next slide, please. Okay, so another change, since the last, previous version of, of this tax amendment language is to include updates to section 1301.1.2.1. This is within the special use permit section of the ordinance, which includes the process for conversion of legal non-conforming signs of digital. To note, the previous versions had a proposed conditional use permit process to be sent directly to the Board of Supervisors after staff review. You know, the newly introduced special use permit process, like many other uses within the listed section 1301 of the zoning ordinance, would require the requested conversions to go through the legislative procedures through public hearings, which include the commission as a recommendation body to the Board of Supervisors, like we do with any other special use permit. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide shows the start of proposed changes to Article 1403.3, as it pertains to billboards within commercial C2 and C3 zoning districts. Staff notes that the need for the proposed radial versus existing linear separation distances, this would help remove the need for interpretational determination of street orientation as it relates to existing and new signage in separation with those. The separation distances of 3,000 and 1,000 feet, depending on proximity to municipalities, would be maintained, which they are existing in the ordinance today. And just to note, since the last version of this text, the applicant has removed the proposed 500-foot separation distance language for proposed digital conversion. So it would still have to meet the 3,000 or 1,000 feet. Next slide, please. Okay, so this section includes proposed setback changes to zero feet from property lines. However, there are certain restrictions here for residential zoning and uses. This would also keep the minimum 500 separation distance from parks, schools, and roadside rest areas, as is existing in the ordinance today. Also included within, within this section is what I mentioned previously with the scenic corridors, which would be defined to include both regulatory and policy scenic corridors areas, and further clarifies that no billboard shall be, shall be prohibited from being erected within the scenic corridors, but also within 660 feet of the scenic corridor areas. So a lot of these scenic corridors are also, have a lot more width, you know, along highways and roadways, and, and so there are, you know, that is a big distance from the edge of those scenic corridors there, the 660 feet. Next slide, please. Okay, so proposed development standards include increased height and sign area for billboards located within 300 feet of a freeway. However, you know, all other billboards would need to meet the current standards of maximum 300 square feet and maximum 30 feet in height. So the only changes are along the freeways, which is being proposed here. Next slide, please. And so this slide includes updated diagrams and exhibits, as well as inclusion of the military zoning overlay requirements. Should that be a factor, depending on the site involved here? Next slide, please. Okay, so now we get into the proposed digital billboard regulations. And to note, you know, digital billboards are currently not allowed per the county zoning ordinance. Major change since the last zipper meeting is that the applicant has restricted digital billboards to only freeways, so no arterials, no highways even would allow for digital purpose tax. The changed language would require technology features with horizontal and vertical louvers, as well as downward and angled LEDs to help minimize additional white pollution near residential areas. Next slide, please. And so continuation of the proposed digital billboard text language with general provisions. And to be clear, with this tax amendment, you know, any new billboard, whether static or digital, would need to meet the requirements of Article 1403.3 of the zoning ordinance, and legal non-conforming signage modifications or conversions to digital would require the special use permit process, as we previously mentioned. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is just the industrial zoning district billboard section, to be subject to all the requirements as the commercial zoning district, which we just covered in the previous slides. So next slide, please. I believe the next four slides, we can skip through, is the existing language. We just have that there. It's all structured, just in case we have to reference it later throughout this discussion today. So if you go to slide 15, or the last, yeah, that's perfect, thank you. And that's, so this is just the two figures that I had in my staff report, the two exhibits, which mention the scenic corridors shown, you know, the locations are shown there on the map to the left, as well as the applicant provided map from darksky.org, showing large portions of Maricopa County as being within the green area on the map, as you can see, which represents allowance of electronic message centers, also known as digital signs per state statute. The other star, in yellow areas near Tucson and Flagstaff, extending to the northern parts of the state, represent major astronomical observatories, as well as international dark sky areas. So in summary today, you know, from staff's perspective, you know, we do note that the opposition includes concerns with lighting, dark skies, as well as scenic views, you know, driver safety, lack of public inclusion and input during the public hearing process, energy use, property values, larger and taller signs, and, and just generally, you know, opposition to billboards in general, and of course, digital as well, are the, are the major concerns there. And, you know, we do have over a thousand pages of comments here today. We're still receiving some more, so, you know, we're constantly getting more, more views on that. So, you know, and staff understands the concerns by the opposition and notes, you know, that although digital billboards would be allowed if the tax amendment is approved, they would be limited only to freeways. be limited only to freeways, you know, and also scenic corridors would be restricted of any billboards. Also heights and size increase would also be concentrated on freeways as well. And the newer technology included proposed by the applicant with the horizontal and vertical louvers, you know, as well as the downward LED LEDs for mitigation of light trespassing to nearby residential properties would be required, you know, for that as well. Also, you know, positive aspect, a major one for us is, which we mentioned earlier, was the radial separation requirement instead of existing linear. You know, this would eliminate determination and interpretational issues that we've run into in the past. And conversion of digital to of existing legal non-conforming billboards, you know, would require the special use permit public hearing process, like many uses, you know, that go through that. And lastly, you know, there would be a requirement for new and altered illuminated billboards to be downward lit and fully shielded in lighting. So, you know, that pretty much concludes our staff presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions of his time.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. Way to sum up twelve hundred and ninety-seven pages. There's a lot of information here. I just had one quick question. The SUP process, so all legal non-conforming, should this tax amendment carry legal non-conforming billboards? They can't by right, so it's really just at the discretion of the legislative body to determine if that's the right place for a electronic billboard or not. But there's really not any, are there guidelines, anything they can do by right, or is it totally at the discretion of the, of the, of the process and the, and the board of supervisors?
Right, so Chairman, that is correct. For any conversion of legal non-conforming to digital would require the special use permit process. Otherwise, all other billboards would need to meet the current standards if the sex amendment is approved to go forward without any sort of further entitlement, I should say. So I hope that answers that question for you.
It does, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if you would please. Mr. Ellsworth and then Mr. Gerard, or either one of you, who would like to go first?
Mr. Chairman, it's come that there may be a conflict of interest on the board. Before we have any further discussion, the conflict should be declared.
Okay, and that is, is that Commissioner Dan Zeison?
That's, that's the information I have in front of me.
Well, state that for the record, Mr. Dan Zeison. You're on mute, I believe. I believe you're on mute. Can't hear you, where I can't anyway, maybe others can.
I'll try to give him a call on my cell phone and see if I can bring him in.
So that poses an interesting scenario here. We have one with the conflict and we have another commissioner that will fall off the line at eleven. I'm pretty confident that this is going to go past eleven. So if he declares that conflict, I need some, I need some counsel here. This is.
Recused members count towards a quorum.
I'm sorry?
Recused members do count towards a quorum.
Right, so we will lose our quorum at eleven.
You will not.
Oh, we will not lose a quorum, they just won't vote on it. Oh, that's good news.
He shouldn't even participate, but you had enough members. The fact that he has to leave because he's recused does not affect the quorum.
Well, that's great. That's great news. Now we just need to clear up that I think it's him, but he's not on the line. We just need to hear from them and declare that for the record and make sure he is on the line and will continue.
Commissioner Dan Zeison is now on the line.
Hey, sorry, guys. My thing says it, says it is working. I don't know why it's not, but yes, I need to declare conflict on this. I'm sorry about this. I did it before and I think I had to do it again.
Okay, but you will remain on the line with us?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, you get out of here.
No. It's the equivalent of when we have an in-person meeting that they have to leave the auditorium.
But we don't lose our quorum, so he leaves, but we need to call him back at the end?
No, at the start of the presentation, you count and see if you have a quorum. You do. The fact that he has recused himself and is not present does not impact your quorum.
Perfect, great. So let's, let's proceed then.
In-person meeting where they have to leave, they have to leave the dais and it's preferable that they leave the room.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grass.
Point of information, do you need a majority of the ten members to approve these things or do you just need a majority of commissioners present and voting?
It's the latter. If you have six people at that point to pass, you need four votes.
So now we need three, or the applicant needs three.
No, your quorum is six, therefore he needs four.
I'll get it, I'll get it. Still, it's as if they're present, but they're refused to go off. Okay. These are word problems. Put them in numbers. Okay, here we go. So let's, let's, let's proceed. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Grass.
Just to make sure, if you said the quorum is six, that excludes Commissioner Dan Zeison, is that right?
No, that includes because somebody's leaving at eleven.
Okay, okay.
And if that, if, if the applicant won't be done by eleven, I, that member, that member who is number seven can leave now or at eleven, whatever moves that particular member. But Mr. Dan Zeison's absence does not affect in counting a quorum.
So what I'm hearing is if a train leaves Chicago at eleven, we can still proceed and we just need to vote. Okay, let's go ahead. Any questions for, for Ray before we hear from the applicant? Okay, Harry Nun is the applicant on the line. I believe that if you are, state your name and address for the record.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. For the record, Bill Lally, twenty-five twenty-five East Calmbach Road, today representing the applicant on this tax amendment.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Lally. Go ahead. Would, if you wouldn't mind, just the key points and, and your letter was very informational. Just ten minutes, is that fair?
Yes, very fair. We've got, you know, Ray did a great job of highlighting some of the history, some of what's happened. If we could go to the next slide, please. I'll just kind of give you and others a little bit of framework of where we've been over the last years. The application was submitted in twenty eighteen. So in twenty eighteen, we spent a number of meetings down at the county in person with a great number of folks filled up the, the old room there where we used to have tack meetings with all of the industry professionals, a lot of dark sky folks, a lot of other interested parties from the New River Desert Hills folks. And so we had a series of meetings in twenty eighteen and in twenty nineteen whereby we made a number of changes to this tax amendment in response to those interested parties. And let me just walk back and say, why, why are we here today as the applicant and not the county? So the county obviously has their own process for doing a tax amendment where they, you know, engage the EROP process to send out to stakeholders, identify stakeholders, potential tax amendments. They do it all the time. This was a case where this tax amendment, as discussed in twenty eighteen, was going to be a more regulatory document. It was going to regulate the private industry more so than was the current code. That's different than sort of federal mandates that come down to requirements for us to change air quality or state mandates that we have to change codes. This was a, an industry, a private industry. And at the time, the board of supervisors had a moratorium on, on, on staff-led, staff-initiated new tax amendments that had an additional regulation on private business. So we worked with staff in twenty eighteen to accomplish a number of things that staff could not do on their self, on their own. And staff has walked through a number of the changes to how you measure distance between billboards. Staff has inserted some things about uplighting versus downlighting. And, and I think there are a number of things in this code initially, when it started, that staff believed were things that they would like to see changes to the overall zoning code. In that process, we, as the industry, inserted a number of things as the applicant sponsoring things that really brought the code up to today's standards. Prior to this, we did a number of variances and/or legislative changes to raise billboards, change the heights and size of billboards to accommodate areas where there's a depressed nature of billboards or it's further away from the freeway, harder to see. Because in reality, Maricopa County's development standards for billboards is the only one of its kind in the entire valley. Every other city in the entire valley has billboard allowances to allow billboards to go up to forty-eight feet by right, up to seventy feet in some areas, and then fourteen by forty-eight as the standard size. And so those were the things that were entered into at the very early stages of this to bring the code in compliance with, you know, we call it industry standards, but in reality, it's the standard across the entire valley. It's the standard across the entire country. So when you're driving through cities and you see a fourteen by forty-eight foot tall building, a forty-eight feet tall, or not building, but sign, this is the standard. And so bringing the county zoning code to the new standard made a lot of sense. We went through the process to initiate a process to change it to digital. So in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we had a lot of discussion about what would that look like from a process in Maricopa County to change the code to allow for digital billboards. Every other municipality in the valley that allows billboards, every one of them, allows digital conversions and/or allows digitals by right in the process. Every city has a little bit different process and in the state statute allows for cities to delegate things to their board of adjustment, delegate things to a non-legislative body. And many of those cities, including Phoenix, process digital conversions through a non-legislative body. Unfortunately, here in the county, we have a different statute that we had to abide by. So we spent a lot of time with staff and with the industry and with stakeholders in those early days, try, and, and most recently, trying to define a process, a public hearing process that makes the most sense for the county, given we have a different statute, and what makes the most sense in terms of what the county already has in terms of a process. Ray did a great job of explaining where we got to today, which is a special use permit process. Special use permit process has been around for many, many years. Let's go to the next slide, please, just to kind of give you an overall of what's, what we're talking about. The special use permit process has been in place in Maricopa County forever, as long as I've been doing cases for twenty-plus years. It's been there. It's been a tool to allow large uses like airports, cell towers, large storage facilities. So it's a legislative process that has public notice out to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet, reports, a review, planning commission hearing, board of supervisors hearing. And so we settled on that as the appropriate process for a digital conversion today because it's one of the few processes that are not geared towards a wholesale land change, like a zoning case where you have residential to commercial. So the special use permit process made the most sense for what we had to work with. Legal non-conforming billboards are inserted into that special use process because that's how most cities look at it. Most cities have a, a more rigorous process to get through a billboard conversion for legal non-conforming. So we felt like this process made the most sense. We can go to the next slide. And Mr. Chairman, board members, you've heard a lot of this, but I will go through quickly some of these changes. I know there's a lot of speakers. I want to be respectful of all the speakers. I'll try to go through this quickly and then save it for questions and/or rebuttal. But again, this gives you an overview of many of the changes. The new kind of technology that we refer to as a louvered technology, unfortunately, I know we don't have a lot of time today, but we do have some videos links in this presentation if the, if the commission wants to see some videos that reference what that technology looks like. But basically, it's a shielding technology to direct the image from a digital billboard to the viewing public along the freeway and prevent and shield that from spilling into areas where we don't want it to go, maybe adjacent properties, maybe residential across the street. So that technology has been introduced for the very first time in the entire state as a new technology to help mitigate light spillage on, on properties and direct the light to the intended audience, which is on the road. Next slide, please. Quickly, this is one of the biggest change. I've highlighted radial in the, in that paragraph. Radial distancing was something that was very, very important for staff to have in here, how you separate, measure separation from billboards. Previously, if you had one billboard on one corner facing an arterial, another billboard on another corner facing another arterial, potentially they could be feet away from each other. Going forward, that will not be the case. A radial circle would be drawn around the billboard, a thousand feet in all directions. New billboards will have to maintain that separation. Next slide, please. This is probably one of the bigger ones, where we took all of the scenic corridors that are referred to in policy documents. They're not ordinance, so they're not prohibited by ordinance, but in the policy documents in the county and said, you know what, we're going to, we're going to put those in this ordinance and say, no billboards in those scenic quarters. Not just no digital billboards, but no billboards. So this is quite a new change in terms of where billboards can and can't come, or can and can't be located. We're trying to protect the sensitive areas and the outlying areas in response to a lot of the comments we heard from the dark sky community. No billboards will be erected within and within sixteen, six hundred and sixty feet of a scenic corridor. Next slide, please. This one really talks about the new technology. It has a very specific description of that new louvered technology that will help mitigate light spillage and direct to the streets that it's intended to see and mitigate any kind of spillage on the surrounding property. So again, groundbreaking technology that nobody else in the valley has mandated. So we think this is quite a coup for the county to be able to have an applicant willing to offer this new technology, but obviously not any cheaper. We do have folks on the, on the call today who are the engineers who've designed this. If there's any specific questions, we can call on them. Next slide, please. Gives you a little feel for what that technology does. Again, it's a very technical type of technology, but it down shines the image to the street and to the cars and to the intended public. Next slide, please. And this gives you a picture of those louvers. So louvers will be designed around every diode within the digital face, and those louvers can be designed at different heights to angle the board away from certain things and/or to certain things. Those little dots, the white dots are really the light monitors for dimming, automatic dimming. So we have that in the, in the code as well. Next slide, please. These are the videos that we're going to go past today. I know we don't have a lot of time. If, if the commission would like to see a few of these videos, we can come back and click on a couple of these videos. The one at the very top is the news story of where this was implemented in Utah and all of the neighbors were, were not exactly excited about a particular billboard. And then once this new technology was implemented, the city, the neighbors and everyone saw a dramatic, dramatic enhancement to the area. So we can come back to that unless you want to see that now, but I know we're pressed for time. Next slide. Again, the SUP process has been around for many, many, many years. What this ordinance will do, will initiate the, the process for any legal non-conforming billboard. Again, this special use permit process has been around for billboards for many years that are taken through condemnation. So the rules, the application process, the, the notice provisions have all been around for many, many years. There's, there's no magic to that. We're not changing any of that. The special use permit process that you see for large uses will be the same exact use or process for converting the type of lighting on a structure that's already allowed by right. And so we, again, notification to neighbors, planning commission, board of supervisors hearings, all publicly notified. We think it's the most transparent and open process for a change for a legal non-conforming billboard to go from static digital. Next slide, please. Do we have one more? Okay, so you've seen a lot of letters that have come in. What we're trying to give you a feel for is where some of those letters have, have come from. We've, this one and the next slide will show you where some of the opposition letters were submitted from. We've also done some exhibits. If you can go to the next slide, it shows where the billboards are likely located and where the, maybe not the most recent, but the bulk of the opposition letters have come in from. And I think the bulk of the letters, if you've read them, are talking about degradation in the existing neighborhoods, really the northeast corner there. If you look at the Phoenix Mountain Preserve, a lot of the letters are coming from that central Phoenix area. Many of the billboards in the east valley. Many of the billboards in the East Valley, located here along the freeways, do have some opposition letters and some support letters in the area. But again, as you've seen, the massive stack of opposition come in. Keep in mind, most of those are talking about impacts on neighborhoods, and these billboards are not within those neighborhoods. They're not going to be on arterials to be converted. These are existing billboards that are there today along the freeways and within 300 feet of the freeways that are subject to the digital conversion. Let's go to the next slide, please. Again, trying to show you the West Valley as well. A lot of these billboards in the county islands have shown up along the freeways, a few in the Levine-Astoria area. We've had a few comments from there. We'll note that the text amendment itself does prohibit any new freeway. So we've identified the existing freeways where these will go, but we've prevented billboards to be on newly named freeways, similar to what will happen, which is the SR-30. The SR-30 is contemplated to connect the 202 and the 303 in the West Valley, an east-west leg of the freeway. This code has language in there that prohibits, once that freeway is built, for billboards to automatically go in there, to allow for that community to have the right to comment down the road if that's an appropriate area. So that is another future prohibition. Next slide, please. So in summary, this code does allow for billboards to get a little bit taller, a little bit bigger, very similar to what every city in the valley is doing. It allows for a few to be bigger and taller. The majority of those billboards, and we've done a lot of cases, have already received variances and/or allowances through zoning cases to be taller and bigger to meet those kind of current standards. So there's going to be very few of those cases, probably going through the process for additional height and size. This code does do a lot more to restrict where billboards can be, scenic corridors, newly built freeways, SR-30, corners of intersections. The digital conversion goes through a public hearing process, similar to any kind of a land use through the SUP. It also restricts it to only freeways, only freeways. There was an intent or a section that seemed to limit the separation for legal nonconforming billboards less than 1,000 feet. That was taken out. I know that shows up in a lot of letters to the commission, but we did take that out. There's a lot of studies, and you'll probably hear a lot today, about driver safety distraction concerns. And there's lots and lots of studies around the country and around the world. And I guess I would leave you with this. When it comes to driver safety and distraction, if it is a massive issue, why did every single city in the valley? And why is the state of Arizona allowed for digital conversions of billboards if it is such a massive problem? We all drive the freeways today. We all see the digital billboards around the valley today. We see the technology. I don't know of any study locally here in the valley that says and demonstrates that it is a public concern and a driver distraction. So you'll hear a little bit of that today, but I think in all, this code is beneficial. It brings things to be inconsistent with all of the other cities in the valley. It mandates a technology that no other city in the valley has mandated that will help mitigate the light better than any other city in the entire state. And honestly, it will provide a public process for when those conversions happen that is much, much more heightened than any other city in the valley. So with that, Mr. Chairman, members, I know there's a lot of speakers today, and you may have some questions as well, will be available for rebuttal.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. Thank you for the summary. You know, there's only, by my last count, 1,300 pages here, so that's hard to summarize all that. But I'll just tell you, of all of the 1,300 pages I read over the last few years here, the most significant thing to me was in paragraph eight, "The applicant has addressed every issue and concern raised by staff to date." I don't think I've ever seen that before, but that's interesting. But we're going to talk about a lot of these things. We have a lot of people to get through. Before we go to the people who'd like to speak, does anyone on the commission have some follow-up questions for Mr. Lally? We'll give him some time at the end of all this. Anyone at this time? Okay, hearing none. Let's, let me pull up my list here, and let's hear. And what we'll try to do is we want to hear from all those that are on the line with us. And so I'll start a clock. I'm not going to, I don't mean to be rude, but if we can just keep it at three minutes, I'll just kind of give you a little heads up, and that way we'll give everyone a chance to speak here. So first is Matt Anderson on the line. Matt Anderson. If you are, just state your name and address for the record, and go ahead, please.
I am Matt Anderson at 3530 East Hazelwood Street in Phoenix, Arizona.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I am actually here to be a technical resource to the applicant, and realistically, will kind of stand pat based upon the questions that are asked and respond to them accordingly.
Great, thank you. Thank you for being with us. And we may do a deeper dive into some of these videos and things if there are questions and concerns from the commission about the technology. So thank you for being with us. I hope I can get this name correct. Cheng, are you going to make me say it? John? Cheng, are you on the line with us?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Cheng Tian, and I live at 959 Falcon Boulevard in Burlington, Ontario, Canada. And I'm the original inventor and technology and engineer for this particular product that we're talking about here. So I'm with Matt Anderson as well, and I'm available to answer any technical questions or to clarify any concerns or anything about this technology.
Great. Thank you for being on with us today, Cheng. At the end, when we have the commission discussion, there may be some discussions on this new louver technology, so thank you. Next is Claude Haynes. Are you, if you're on the line, unmute, and your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I hope you hear me. My name is Claude Haynes. I reside at 3860 East Park Avenue in Gilbert. I am manager of the Gilbert Rotary Centennial Observatory and a member of the East Valley Astronomy Club. There is a misconception in the text of the proposed amendment. The diagram on page five that shows billboards at 300 square feet as the norm just isn't the norm. All of the billboards along the freeways are greater than that size. Becker Boards has a total of eight signs in Sun City and Mirage. They're not near the freeways. Almost all of the arterial signs nearby are greater than 300 square feet also. That has been something that has been allowed for a long period of time. All of the current digital billboards from Becker Boards are 14 by 48 in size or 672 square feet. And the vast majority of static billboards, over 80 of those in Becker Boards inventory, are the same size. This isn't about increasing size. It's about normalizing large billboards. To that point, the addition of text to neutralize section 1112.7.1 of the Maricopa County General Code is an outrageous attempt to no longer require signs greater than 301 feet, almost the entire inventory of Becker Boards and other sign companies, especially along the freeways, to go dark after midnight. This wording should not be replaced with a free pass to be noncompliant for up to six years. This is a prime example of why ordinance written by vendors to control their own industries must be carefully reviewed. Please do not legalize bad behavior. Do not accept the recommendation to strike out a current lighting requirement that is beneficial to the community. I'm also curious why most static billboards erected are noncompliant. The example would be newer boards erected by Becker Boards along I-10 between 75th and 83rd Avenue with pairings of digital and static billboards. The static portion of these billboards is lit from below. If the standard is for lighting from above, why are newer boards continuing to be permitted with noncompliant lighting from below? I would encourage the commission to include wording to require all new signs to be conforming and not to continue to approve noncompliance as the norm. There is also no control of density and the number of billboards. The net effect is to create a non-scenic corridor along valley freeways. Becker Boards alone has almost 90 static billboards currently along the freeways. The ordinance now seems to enable billboards every 1,000 feet. I would encourage the commission to consider the impact of density and congestion of billboards, not simply whether it is legal to convert them or not. I appreciate the chance to speak and your thoughtful consideration of the ordinance.
Commissioner Arnett, you're muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you. The timing was perfect, Mr. Haynes. Thank you for that. That's not my alarm. But any clarifying comments from the commission? If not, we'll go to Mr. Mark Fauzone. If you're on the line, please state your name and address for the record after you unmute.
Yes, hi. My name is Mark Fauzone. I'm the president of Scenic America. We are based in Washington, DC at 727 15th Street, Suite 1100. And we also have an affiliate in scenic Arizona. And so I'm really, I'm here at the request of the citizens of your county to provide some expert testimony on driver and traffic safety and billboard blight. So thank you for the time. I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, that one of the worst, first of all, Scenic America, our mission is to preserve and enhance the visual character and scenic beauty of our country. We advocate for scenic America for all people and communities. And one of the worst aspects of digital billboards is the dangers that are present to drivers and pedestrians. These signs make roads more dangerous by creating harsh lighting and distracting electronic imagery that impairs drivers, putting lives at risks. Digital billboards create dangerous and unavoidable driver distractions by design and for the purpose of drawing driver attention away from the road and toward the advertisements. And this is really, you know, this is just common sense, right? I mean, why would anybody advertise on a billboard if they think it wouldn't, if they thought nobody would look at it, right? How would the industry survive? And so just by common sense and by its, you know, what we all know to be true, you know, that is what digital billboards and billboards are designed to do, is to get you to look at them and away from the road. So, you know, just that shouldn't, from a common sense perspective. But human error is indeed the leading cause of traffic accidents, and lawmakers have come to recognize the importance of reducing driver distraction by enacting laws, for instance, to ban cellphone use while driving. And in those cases, the industry actually led the efforts because they realized that their products were distracted. Now, there is a plethora of evidence, and study after study has been done over a whole body of research that indicates that digital billboards create similar distracting conditions. So the gold standard is the Veridian Group, who has specialized in this research study. I want to be clear, they are not affiliated with Scenic America. This is an independent group, and the leading researcher, his name is Jerry Wachtel. He is certainly, perhaps, one of the leading experts on this in the entire world, but at least in the US, he is the leading expert on digital billboards and distracted driving. And he did a study that looked, it was a compendium of studies on this very topic. He evaluated 27 different high-quality studies, and they collectively demonstrated that there is conclusive evidence, conclusive evidence, that digital billboards contribute to distracted driving. These research projects studied driver behavior in places such as Virginia, Alabama, Florida, sort of in different places in the country. I would note that the applicant has also cited a study from FHWA that he claims debunks all the other 27 studies. That's the one that's right, not the others that are wrong. And I would say that FHWA didn't even publish for peer review their study because it was so flawed and badly compromised. And indeed, Jerry Wachtel and the Veridian Group did an actual critique of that study itself as a standalone paper and showed all of the various research flaws in that one study, the one study that is cited by the billboard industry.
If you could just conclude, Mr. Fauzone. Thank you.
Sure. I'll move to conclusion. I'll just say two sentences on billboard blight, which is, they are indeed a harmful form of scenic blight with significant negative impacts. And research also indicates that billboards can reduce property values for nearby property owners, causing economic harm to the surrounding community. With that said, thank you for the time. I really appreciate the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fauzone. Thanks for being on the call. Any clarifications from the commission? Next, we'll have Dr. Rolf Jensen. If you're on the line, please unmute and state your name.
Can you hear me now?
We can now. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name is Rolf Jensen. I'm a Tempe resident at 839 West 14th Street, and I'm also a professional astronomer. So thank you, Chairman Arnett and commissioners. Even the best baffled digital billboards with the newest technology emit light above the horizontal. Contrary to light aimed downwards, light emitted near and above the horizontal is scattered many times in the atmosphere and reaches distances of well over 100 miles away. That makes this kind of light pollution a regional issue. It affects not just Maricopa County, but all of its neighboring counties as well. So this issue requires coordination at a multi-county governmental level involving all stakeholders. Conversion of traditional billboards to larger, higher, and much brighter digital boards increases the prominence of the light dome of the Phoenix metropolitan area, which is already raising the brightness of the night sky above natural levels a distance is greater than 120 miles away. Astronomy, planetary sciences, and space sciences represent a capital investment in the Arizona economy of more than $1 billion. And stargazing nets the state in excess of $250 million a year. Also, Arizona hosts the largest optical telescope in the world. So this key industry brings in both federal and international funding to Arizona, but that funding is contingent on the assumption of long-term local protections. That is why compromised legislation in the Arizona state legislature in 2012 included specific state protections and placed restrictions on digital billboards. In other parts of the country, operators are required to remove six to 10 existing billboards as a public benefit in order to erect or convert to one electronic message board. To compensate for their excess brightness, larger and brighter electronic boards should require removal of a larger number of existing billboards. The present language omits any such requirements and limits the opportunity for public comment and oversight, and it fails to involve input from neighboring governments who are stakeholders in this issue. I would therefore urge rejection of this particular text amendment as written, which is not in the best interest of Maricopa County residents. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions from the commission? All right, moving on. Thank you, sir. Marvin Borsand on the line. Marvin, if you're on the line with this one.
Commissioner Arnett, I do not see Marvin listed on the attendee list, so I'm unable to unmute him.
Not a problem. Let's go on to Tristan Schaub. Tristan, are you with us today?
All right. It says I just unmuted myself. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Go ahead, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, folks. My first question is, is who does this request serve? Yeah, so the billboards, in our opinion, I live in Arcadia, they are dangerous. When you approach a military checkpoint... When you approach a military checkpoint, the first thing that they do is they flash a light in your eye. They have a strong light, they flash it in the upcoming vehicle's eyes. It's meant to disarm, it's meant to disorient, and it's, it's meant to draw their attention to the checkpoint. Digital billboards are dangerous. The applicant claims that it is the wave of the, of the future. And what I would ask you gentlemen, sitting on the line here, is, do you believe that looking at a cellphone while driving is a good idea? Probably not. It's been legislatively banned. So why would you, you know, all of you set down a four-by-seven inch display while driving, but yet allow in the same breath today, a fourteen-by-forty-eight-foot display to be placed on roadways? Mind you, these are roadways where it's very dark. I've driven these areas of Nevada near Laughlin, where they put these billboards up and you cannot see anything past these billboards as a driver. It is very dangerous for anything on the other side of those billboards. It's the wave of the future, claims the applicant. Do board members on the line here, do you guys run pop-up blocking ad software on your laptops? I'm sure Mr. Lally did. Otherwise, boy, that would be very distracting for his exceptional presentation today to have ads popping up in the middle of his, of his conversation. It's pretty clear that these ads are meant to distract drivers. I'll draw your attention to an submittal, a report on the safety impacts of digital billboards, which Mr. Neil Hadad has submitted, specifically looking at an Israeli study that shows that when existing billboards were covered or removed, accidents declined by thirty to forty percent. And then when they put the billboards back up, they increased by thirty to sixty percent. This was corroborated here in Arizona, or excuse me, in Florida and Alabama, with similar rates of it going down and then it returning. The, where did that go? Well, I lost my paperwork here. Hold on a second. We can, so the question from the applicant was, we haven't been able to see this in Arizona. Well, I'm pleased to say that the Arcadia Camelback Mountain Neighborhood Association, through a Freedom of Information Act, has requested from Phoenix PD digital, digital billboard distracting accidents within our boundaries. So specifically Forty-Fourth Street in Camelback, where there are no digital billboards, and Forty-Fourth Street in Indian School, where there are existing billboards. Digital advertising corresponds to a greater number of vehicular accidents on average, and the relative rates are increasing each year from ten percent more in twenty eighteen, thirty percent more in twenty nineteen, and fifty-seven percent more in twenty twenty, comparing those two intersections, right? Both arterial, both similar streets, both in our neighborhood. Previous studies have cited increased dwell times at locations where digital advertising is present. At both of these intersections, the light cycles first for left-turning traffic, followed by through traffic. Over the past three years, there's a stark difference, folks. Thirty-eight percent increase in the number of left-turn accidents between the dwell-prone digital intersection versus the non-digital intersection. So I will just leave you with that. Whether it's Israeli, whether it's Florida, Alabama, whether it's here in our local area, these digital billboards are dangerous. We ask that you please adhere to the same legislation that applies to your cellphone to put these things down. These darker areas are, you know, dangerous at night when lit up. And quite frankly, they're being smart. This is a strategy that serves only the billboard companies to get digital displays placed in areas before the county annexes them. We're battling this afternoon. Why? Because Arcadia, sixty years ago, was county land. And now it's been annexed with these non-conforming billboards. The beauty of it is that we actually have a fair process to battle the conversion. These people who live in these areas will never have that. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for being with us today. Any clarifying questions from the commission? All right, next, Amy Oliver. If you're on the line, please unmute and state your name for the record.
Commissioner Arnett, Amy has asked to allow someone who's further down the list to speak because he has to leave.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
That's okay. So Richard Green is going to take her spot in the list? And I have unmuted there.
Thank you very much.
Just for clarification, does Amy want to come back to speak later or just take her place?
I'm guessing she wanted to switch spots because Dr. Green has to leave.
I'll, I'll make that note here. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Richard Green.
I appreciate your consideration very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So I'm an astronomer at the University of Arizona. Our address is nine thirty-three North Cherry in Tucson. I'm Assistant Director of the Astronomy Program there, and I have the good fortune to speak on behalf of a youth organization called the Arizona Astronomy Consortium, which represents all the professional observatories in the state of Arizona. And we do, as Dr. Jansen has said, we have major concerns about the proposed text amendment because of the technology and request to replace conventionally illuminated billboards with digital billboards. We acknowledge that they are installing the state-of-the-art in that technology. However, you also saw the picture where the top profile of the light goes above horizontal. This is light that's projected outward, so it's not like reflecting an external light off a board. It's, it is a light, and it's going above horizontal. In fact, if you saw their opening cone angle, almost a third of the light goes above horizontal. What their half-inch louvers have accomplished is wonderful. It cuts the top angle down in half, almost, from thirty degrees to fifteen degrees. But still, the point is that that light that is projected directly and just above horizontal has the longest legs. It travels the farthest in the atmosphere, and it actually contributes directly to the sky glow above the professional observatories, those purple stars that you saw, even up to two hundred miles away. And so, as you know, in recognition of the value of our natural desert environment, the importance of astronomy to this state, most counties and localities do have regulations, as Maricopa County does, to control light trespass in the skyward direction. And, and the core of those regulations, as was mentioned already, is fully shielded fixtures. What that means is that no light is projected directly above horizontal. So even though you're getting a proposal with the best current technology, if you legalize it, you're taking a step fifty years backwards in protection of Arizona's valuable resource of a dark night sky by saying, yes, we now, it's okay to have lights that are not fully shielded. In addition to achieve the range of brightness for full color rendering, this technology has limits as well. To be easily visible in daytime, the nighttime brightness of that display, you saw a number, you saw three hundred nits. The typical externally illuminated billboard is about a hundred nits at its brightest. And that's far above currently recommended limits by the Professional Illumination Engineering Society based on what you need to see things clearly against, you know, a little bit of urban lighting in the background. So as Dr. Jansen said, the sky glow, the big dome above Maricopa County impacts telescopes throughout our whole state, Flagstaff, Tucson, even the distant Mount Graham with that world's largest telescope. So our opinion is that this current text amendment really runs counter to the needs of one of the most visible and high-impact industries in the state of Arizona, professional astronomy. Thanks very much and thanks for your consideration and doing that swell.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Green. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Green.
Before Dr. Green goes off, I had a question for him. I just want to make sure, he's representing the association that, of astronomers in Arizona, is that correct?
It's the professional observatories. So it is the places with the large professional telescopes located on their mountain sites.
Okay, so thank you for that, Dr. Green. I guess my question for you is, do you believe, and I think these are fifty or so signs that the industry believes would, would, would result in, in these digital billboards? Do you believe that's kind of a tipping point for the light dome that already exists? And are you suggesting that all of these observatories are going to be closed down because they can no longer function due to the digital billboards? I just want to make sure I understand your point here.
That's a strong point, that they would actually be subject to closure. There is the potential for actual growth in this industry by building new telescopes. But that depends on external investors' perception of the willingness of local governments to cooperate in trying to control the growth of, of the light in the sky. And so on a keynote issue like this one, they'll look and say, you know, what are county officials actually thinking? Are they taking steps to keep things under control? Or is this just one more march toward faster and faster growth of artificial light? So will they pull out tomorrow? I'm not raising an alarm like that, but I'm saying that we have a lot of US government and institutional investors, even foreign governments, who look at what localities are doing in consideration of their investment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other clarifications from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Green. Thanks for being with us today. Next, we'd like to hear from Larry Whitesell. If you're on the line, please unmute and go ahead.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Larry Whitesell. I reside at seven one two zero North Twentieth Street in Phoenix. And I submitted a letter for your review. I don't know if you had a chance to read it. So I'm going to highlight some of the points, but I'm also going to respond to some information that we heard in today's presentation by Mr. Lally. I would like to make a correction of a couple of things that Mr. Lally presented. The first of which is that every city has approved digital billboards. That is incorrect. You should have received a letter from the town of Gilbert that clearly states, and this is dated today, so you may not have had a chance to review it either. Their first bullet point says, off-site commercial signs, parentheses, billboards, are prohibited in the town of Gilbert. And they are greatly concerned about the number of county islands within Gilbert and surrounding, and the impact that it would have. So I encourage you to look at the information presented by the town of Gilbert. I'd also like to take issue with Mr. Lally pointing out that much of the opposition comes from areas that are, are within city limits or other towns or other towns and cities. We live in Maricopa County. We drive through Maricopa County. We care about the quality of life in Maricopa County. We don't just care about our individual neighborhoods. And that's why we take the time to do presentations and send information to either oppose or support issues that we care about. I also would like to point out that much of the conversation is focusing on fifty or so existing billboards that could convert to digital. But keep in mind that the text amendment would allow the addition and installation of new billboards in areas where they don't exist today. I also want to point out that there have been many iterations of this text amendment. And it's confusing because the iterations are not necessarily dated. The information that I presented in writing prior to the meeting, I'm not sure if it was even from the current revised language, and it may or may not have been. So it would be really helpful if we knew when each of these iterations was issued so that we could really have current information. I also want to mention that because of the amount of negative responses to the current proposal from the stakeholders, stakeholders of all kinds, the text amendment should be rejected. A text amendment of this significance should be drafted by all stakeholders, not just a single billboard company. Let's talk about some specifics of the proposed text amendment. My biggest concern is that the distancing, separation requirements setbacks are inadequate, and they are less restrictive than the current language. Now, some of this may have changed in the newest revision of the, of the ordinance or the proposal, but I, I'm not sure. But one thing that is concerning that I'm, I'm seeing on the most current submission, the notice of the meeting, is provision B setback requirement. There shall be a zero-foot setback from any property line except as follows. A hundred feet from residential zoning in a rural district, a hundred and fifty feet from residential zoning. Oh, that's a non-illuminated billboard, a hundred feet. An illuminated billboard, only a hundred and fifty feet. And no billboard within five hundred feet of any park, school, or roadside rest area. That is inadequate. Most cities and towns require at least five hundred feet from residential. So this provision is inadequate and should not be considered. I also want to mention the development standards. This is point F in the version that I was making my notes from. It's talking about billboards located three hundred feet from existing freeways that would be smaller and not as high as billboards located, I'm sorry, the first one is billboards located greater than three hundred feet away from existing freeways are smaller and not as high, while billboards located within three hundred feet of existing freeways would be larger and higher. Considering concepts of perspective and vanishing point, this provision is backwards. Billboards closer to a freeway should be smaller in square footage and lower in height. Those further away should be larger, could be larger and taller. There's also been a concern about scenic, scenic corridors.
And if you could please conclude, Mr. Whitesell. We've given you a little extra time here, but if you could please conclude.
Yes, just realize that nothing has been said about the southern part of the county along State Route eighty-five and I-8. I presented information in my written submittal that talks about the impacts on those areas. And I'm, I'm concerned about those scenic areas that are not designated scenic corridors, but they certainly are highly traveled routes through southern Arizona and through Maricopa County. Thank you very much for the additional time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Appreciate you being with us. Any clarifying questions from the commission? Okay, next we have, I have two names on the same line. I don't know if you want to present together or go separately, but Neil Haddad and Paul Barnes. I don't know if you're on the same connection or how that works, but want to give you guys time now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Neil Hadad, three four zero two North Forty-second Street in Phoenix, eight five oh one K. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thanks for the time. We sought out and provided to you information from national, international, and local experts in the fields of glare and brightness, of traffic and driver safety, of public views, of dark skies, and of the study of astronomy in Arizona and its vast contributions to our economy. Professor Green said one billion dollars annually. We were provided with a study by Jerry Wachtel, whose international research and experience refuted the claims made by the applicant that there is no correlation between billboards and distraction, especially digital billboards and driver and traffic safety. We heard from Mark Falzone of Scenic America, who talked about the scenic blight caused by digital billboards. We will hear from the Sierra Club Grand We will hear from Sierra Club, Grand Canyon Chapter's Sandy Barr, an established advocate for the preservation of our scenic views and wildlife, and weighed in with Sierra Club's concerns. And our concerns for the impact on dark skies were shared by Professor Green, Professor Jansen of ASU, and Amy Oliver is soon to come up. And I also believe Luke Edens of the Phoenix International Dark Sky Association. Also hundreds of residents, and I'm asking the chair if staff could provide the number of opposition statements that have been made thus far. But thus far, we know that hundreds of residents from across the county have voiced their opposition to making these changes in such a piecemeal fashion, decisions that will have a generational impact. We note that there has been zero discussion about takedown boards in exchange for putting up a digital face. There has been no discussion of brightness levels on signs or dwell times or messages. We believe that the process does not allow for a thorough vetting of requests nor adequate public input, and we continue to have real issues with how the process has played out and got to this point. This is complex and permanent. The text amendment should be rejected. If the county thinks that changes should be made, so be it, but start over with industry and resident stakeholders in a transparent manner. This is too important, too permanent, for government to be picking one winner in a sea of stakeholders. And a couple of points, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo what Mr. Whitesell said and just about any of us here that are having to listen to what the applicant's attorney said before. We live in this county. We vote in this county. I am not familiar with any statute that limits how the conversation can come in and who can comment on it. We are all residents of this county, and our opinions matter. On the driver safety federal government's concerns have been studied by the federal, it's up here on the summary screen. Listen, that driver safety distraction point that Mr. Lally comments on right there is incorrect. It is specifically addressed in the study that you received from Jerry Wachtel of the Veridian Group. He specifically challenged it, yet Mr. Lally continues to advance that point.
Okay, please in conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't know how many signs this affects. So, you know, we need to know. And to Mr. Whitesell's point, there have been more than 100 substantive changes made to this. So this text amendment, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is not ready for prime time. We ask you to deny this application. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your thoughts. Any clarifying comments from the commission? Okay, and I have Paul Barnes that was on your same webinar, but I just want to make sure, did Mr. Barnes wish to speak?
Sure, as some of the members know, as some of the members know, Mr. Barnes has caregiver responsibilities, could not stick around for this, but we did supply to you an annotated rebuttal to the applicant attorney's letter, and many of Mr. Barnes' comments are reflected in that letter. So thank you for consideration.
Thank you. And to your question, we do have all of this information in this packet. We've, it is all here in front of us. Of course, we've been reading a lot lately. So thank you very much for your time. Luke Edens.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McGee, pointed clarification.
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the rebuttal letter was emailed to us, I believe, again, late last night or early this morning. So it's in that packet as opposed to our packet packet. Thank you.
Right, there's been a lot of additional information on this case as well as others. So thank you for that clarification. Luke Edens, are you with us?
Yes, I was just waiting to be unmuted.
Yep, there you go. Please state your name and go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Luke Edens. I live at 11840 West Viamantoya Court, Sun City, Arizona. I am the current Vice President of the International Dark Sky Association, Phoenix Area Chapter. I want to thank the commission and the public forum for their increasing awareness about light pollution and its well-documented negative effects on wildlife and human health. The effects on the dark sky is a regional issue, meaning when an electric light source is used at one specific location, its light is scattered by dust and gas molecules in the atmosphere, producing a luminous background which affects the entire region for miles away from the initial light source. This phenomenon is called skyglow, and it's one of the main forms of light pollution. The position of the International Dark Sky Association is to educate the public on how artificial light causes light pollution, ways to mitigate its impact, and share how to use artificial lighting responsibly. We oppose P A 2018001. Our position is the following. First, the intensity of light from thousands of LEDs on a digital billboard face causes more light pollution than any current conventional lit billboard, even if lures are used accordingly. Second, the digital billboards produce nearly triple the amount of nits of illumination during daytime hours, so signs can legibly be seen in the sunlight. This is a useful use of energy towards artificial lighting. Third, digital billboards produce the most light glare during sunset hours when the ambient light in the sky is at its lowest levels, causing a safety risk for rush hour traffic. Fourth, placement of powered billboards in the night sky increases light pollution on the entire region from its skyglow effects. Finally, we should always review that lighting policies and ordinances are updated to the current independent industry standards and recommendations before discussing any new lighting proposals currently or in the near future. Many community lighting policies and ordinances are outdated, and allowing applicants to be the leading source for the information is a biased misdirect for the following independent research recommendations that lead this industry. Thank you for your time and consideration for our opposition in this matter, and I can answer any questions if needed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Any clarifying comments from the commission? Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Dan Penton, are you with us today?
Commissioner Arnett, Dan is unmuted. Appears he's connected. I'm not sure he's not able to speak for some reason, though.
Okay, we'll give just two seconds here, and then we'll move on. Maybe circle back. All right, we'll maybe come back here at the end here, Dan, if you're with us. Lisa Perez, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Lisa Perez, and I reside at 7139 West Forest Grove Avenue in Phoenix. I, like many others that precede me, is speaking in opposition to the text amendment. I feel that billboards are not necessary, create visual blight, and serve no public benefit. As I said, I'm a city of Phoenix resident, and I want to bring up that point that has been made before, and that is, I know in staff report and in the letter from the applicant, as well as his presentation, they point out where the letters of opposition have originated pertaining to certain zip codes that it won't be impacted, and I find that sort of offensive. I'm a Phoenix resident, but in less than a three-minute walk, I'm in unincorporated Maricopa County. So this does have a direct impact on me, even though I am a Phoenix resident. But any of us that have traveled in and out of the state for vacations have driven on Maricopa County roads many, many times, and so this does have an impact, no matter where you live within the county. I believe Maricopa County should and strive to be as transparent as possible when their public policy is being developed. And in this instance, you would be allowing by passage of this text amendment for a private for-profit company to lead the process to change your zoning ordinance. To me, this is a horrible way to make public policy. And while I understand Maricopa County's resistance to themselves adding further regulations, this is just not the solution. It changes to the ordinance were so warranted and needed to be brought up to current standards, this should have been initiated by county staff. Meeting should have been held with all stakeholders, including representatives from the entire billboard industry, all members of the municipalities residing in Maricopa County, and most importantly, residents, sitting at the table and having this discussion. EROP might be a good process, but it's an opt-in versus a way for the county to really reach out and have a good stakeholder outreach process. So if people don't know about EROP, they will never know that this is happening. I can tell you that I didn't find out about this text amendment until May of 2021, and I am one of those weird nerdy people that literally spend my time looking at planning and zoning agendas across the valley to either oppose or support certain policies that are happening within our communities. I do believe that there's reasons why, that there's so many reasons why that this text amendment is bad for Maricopa County. I know a lot has been said, and we can get into it point by point, but that would be forever. But for reasons that I have stated and those that have already been brought up and probably will be after me, I respectfully ask the commission to deny this text amendment. Thank you very much for the opportunity you addressed.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any clarifying comments for Lisa? All right, thank you. Joe Walsh, if you are with us on the line, let's unmute him and go ahead. State your name.
Commissioner Arnett, I do not see Joe Walsh listed on the attendee list.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's keep going forward here. Amy Oliver, I want to give you the opportunity to talk, to take the slot now if you wanted to. If you're still with us and would like to speak, I want to give you that opportunity.
Wonderful. Can you hear me?
We can now. Please, go ahead.
Wonderful. Last time I came to a zipper meeting, my computer didn't want to participate, so thank you very much for figuring that out and for allowing me the opportunity to speak. So we have had a number of individuals, of course, Dr. Richard Green took a moment to preface a little bit of what I'm going to talk about, which is about the economic impact of astronomy and astrophysics in the state of Arizona. And so he did mention $1 billion to the economy. And I want to clarify that as astronomy brings that into the state of Arizona, that isn't just the economy in general, right? So that is through a significant number of jobs, that is through investment in our communities, investment in the infrastructure in our communities, and also through astrotourism, which is one of the biggest industries in Arizona. Look, we have reports about that. We're happy to send some of those economic reports, our last one was in 2016, to the committee if you need to look at that. But sort of focusing in on how all of these different pieces of the economy fit together. Because we are here today talking about an amendment that is based in just trying to help one industry make a change that benefits only that one industry. And we're looking at a summary slide right now. It's been sitting here for most of the meeting, and I'm deeply concerned by the second primary bullet point. We had a number of conversations with Becker Boards, the astronomy industry. We got together with them. The technology does not mitigate the dark sky concern. As you have heard from a number of individuals, while the lovers are excellent at mitigating light trespass, light trespass and light pollution and creating those sky domes are not the same thing. And so it concerns me that we are continuing to see this statement made that there is a mitigation here when there is not a mitigation. Anything above 15 degrees above horizontal is going to continue to impact light pollution and add to that light pollution, which then in turn impacts our economy. So there was a question asked earlier by the commissioners here about is that going to shut down astronomy, shut down observatories, right? And while we can't make the statement, as Dr. Green said, that this will end astronomy tomorrow, the problem is is that this new text amendment is actually opening the door to any legal non-conforming billboards to be changed to digital. And so how many is that? We had another speaker say continuously, non-conforming billboards are being allowed to be built. So every single static, non-conforming billboard that is built in the future now automatically qualifies for conversion to digital. And so we are opening this doorway and this can of worms to creating this larger and larger sky dome that continues to impact, you know, first, the observatories in the immediate area around Phoenix, but Peak Observatory in Tucson can see and is negatively impacted regularly on a nightly basis by the light pollution dome from Phoenix, and that continues to grow. And since we have to already mitigate and account for the growth, and I can hear that beeping, so I will wrap up. We have to already account for the growth of the population, and we do that, and we make that work. Anything that we can do to mitigate that growth, which is unnecessary, will help us in the long run, all to be better neighbors. And thank you so much again for letting me speak, and thank you to your texts for helping me out today.
They are good, that's for sure. Thank you very much for your comments. Any follow-up comments for Amy Oliver? Okay, Charles Wellmantel, Wellmantel?
Thank you. This is Charles Hugh Mantle. I was disappointed not to hear Joe Walsh, though. I'm a big Eagles fan. I appreciate the time to be here today and to speak. I represent Charles Hugh Mantle, field box 1833, Tempe, Arizona 85280. And I represent Outfront Media. You have a tough deal today overall, and not just the last case, but this one as well. Cases are brought before you, and you have to make decisions. And I don't blame Becker for filing a case. Becker Boards has made itself one of the biggest players in the industry by working hard at it. But we at Outfront Media completely disagree with this process. I have heard from the applicant that he speaks for the industry. As a big part of the industry, he certainly does not speak for us. And I've heard from others in the audience that this helps one industry. It doesn't help one industry. It simply helps Becker Boards, and I want to be super clear about that. We only have three minutes. Becker certainly has had more time throughout the process. I think the common thing that you've heard from everyone except Becker Boards so far is that they don't like the process, that the process should be driven, if it's going to happen, by the county staff and not by a single applicant. We wholeheartedly agree with those sentiments. It's hard for us to get a fair opportunity to participate, and frankly, you know, the project has been on again and off again and only started back up again since May. And we don't feel like we have been able to participate fairly in the process that will impact the industry at large. I try to be concise, knowing that I have three minutes. Another speaker, I think it was Larry Whitesell, earlier spoke about policies of other cities. I would agree. In fact, I would disagree with Mr. Lally, who I like quite a bit, but disagree with in this case that this brings some commonality to the cities in what the process is. In fact, I'd ask you to ask Mr. Ellsworth, who recently joined you for Mesa, was a very different policy than what the county is proposing. I think that the code itself has many problems, including the issue of asking people to come back and retrofit. Staff has tried to work through to fix that. I noted your comment, Mr. Chairman, about the staff having a pretty solid report in favor of the applicant. And while I think that it means they worked well with staff, it also means that the rest of us didn't have that opportunity. And the downside of that, I think, for everyone is that if this is the road the county ends up going down, it will mean that each of us in the industry will have to follow that same process. And so we won't be here once talking about signs. We'll be here very often because by necessity, Outfront will be required next to file its own version, and maybe your channel after that. I don't certainly speak for the others. But I think as an industry, we have discussed that either this would happen collectively, and we would all have a chance to participate. And not just those in the industry, people like Mr. Whitesell, who I don't know, but I think made some very good comments about some of the problems with this ordinance. I suspect I'm nearing the end of my three minutes, and so the last point I would like to make is I've heard a number of people suggest, for example, that removing existing boards in return for a digital is a great way for the community to work on both getting advertising where it's needed and reducing the community to work on both getting advertising where it's needed and reducing the overall amount of boards. And we support that. I think that makes good sense. At the end of the day, we would ask that you reject this, and to the extent that the county feels like something else needs to happen, that the direction be that the Board of Supervisors directs staff. And I know that there are limitations without board interaction as to what the staff itself can bring forward. Like the board, I don't fault staff for having to process the application. They have to do it. Becker's entitled to file it, follow it, file it, excuse me, it just doesn't make it a good decision. And so if the decision is that something needs to happen different as it relates to boards, we think it should be a larger process with all of the stakeholders, not just Becker writing the process, and neighbors and the astronomy industry and others all at the table together with a more level playing field. Because we're left in this case with it not being a level playing field. And I appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Any follow-up questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Is that a finger? Yeah, go ahead.
So I have seen from a number of the big billboard companies, am I to understand that Outfront wouldn't be able to convert their billboards to digital billboards under this text amendment? I'm just trying to understand why they think that this is a competitive disadvantage for them.
Well, to start with, we didn't have anything to do fairly with the processing of the case.
Well, that doesn't, reclaiming my time, I don't think that has anything to do with my question of whether you were involved or not. I'm just saying, can you, are you not allowed to convert your billboards to digital?
No. We might be able to, we might be able to benefit in that way, but we don't think it's good for the industry.
You don't believe that digital billboards are good for the industry?
No, I don't believe this text amendment is good for the industry. I do believe that digital boards have value.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's different than saying digital billboards are good for the industry versus the text amendment.
I agree.
So you do believe that digital billboards are good for the industry?
They certainly can be in context, and we have not had a chance to fairly participate in the context of where they're good and bad. Like most things in life, they're not just good or not just bad. For example, I'd refer to Mr. Whitecell's comments, I think it was, about asking for takedowns in response to new boards.
Okay. Can you follow up? Mr. Grass? Be good?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles, for your comments. Appreciate you being on the line with us today. Thank you. Sandy Barr, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this important issue. My name is Sandy Barr, and I represent Sierra Club's Grand Canyon chapter, which is the Arizona chapter. We have members throughout Maricopa County. Our office is located at I-14 West Roosevelt, Phoenix. Sierra Club has long opposed these special laws, rules, ordinances, and now text amendments to benefit billboard companies to the detriment of our communities. I'm here today to express our strong opposition to this text amendment and ask that you reject it. Sierra Club and our members and supporters have a significant interest in keeping dark skies, reducing energy use, ensuring public safety, protecting wildlife, and making our communities more livable. We have consistently opposed efforts to promote electronics/digital billboards, as they contribute significantly to roadway and neighborhood blight, or distraction for already distracted drivers, and emit a considerable amount of light, disrupting wildlife and threatening dark skies in natural areas, as well as for Arizona's observatories. Artificial light can impact the migratory patterns of birds, attract insects away from where they should be, and contribute to their decline, and advantage certain predator species over their prey. Many communities have taken actions to protect the dark skies, recognizing their value for the average resident, for wildlife, and for observatories. The applicant says that all the cities are doing this, and of course, we've heard that's not exactly correct, but that everybody else is doing it argument is weak, especially when the activity is harmful. We do not let our children get away with that argument, and we should not let this applicant either. We oppose allowing more billboards that are bigger, and the significant change for the county to move from no digital billboards to allowing digital billboards. People in our communities are not demanding more and bigger digital billboards. They want our community beautiful desert and wildlife protected, and a glimpse of the stars from time to time. Please reject this text amendment and put the welfare of our communities ahead of the demand of these billboard companies. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any follow-up clarifications for Sandy Barr? Thank you very much for being with us today. I want to circle back to Dan Penton. Are you on the line, Dan? Or unmuted? Let's give Dan a chance, in case he's still there.
Mr. Chairman, I have tried to unmute. Dan, we tried to work with them to get that unmuted, but I don't, I don't know if they could, couldn't get their technology to work, but...
Well, I apologize, Dan. We're trying, we thought we'd take another swing at it. We just, we're giving our best shot. Let's move on. Taylor Earl wishes to speak as well. He's neutral on the matter, it suggests, but if you're on the line, would you go ahead, Dana?
Can you hear me okay?
We can. Go ahead.
Greetings. For your record, my name is Taylor Earl, 3101 North Central Avenue, Phoenix. I'm here on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. Clear Channel is not opposed to the county's zoning ordinance providing an entitlement pathway for digital billboards, but the current text amendment isn't in a form where it should be approved. It doesn't have industry-wide consensus. It really fails to provide the type of reasonable balancing of interests for adjacent municipalities, property owners, and the outdoor advertising industry that would be standard for a sign code ordinance. The amendment hasn't been drafted in a way that would sufficiently benefit or protect the community, which is likely why the county is receiving so much opposition. Now, the text amended process is fundamentally different than the zoning cases the commission normally hears. In the zoning case, we afford the property owner a certain degree of deference to design their project. Now, we ask adjacent owners to comment on aspects of the project that would affect them, like height setbacks. But if a neighbor came in and wanted to start adjusting the floor plan of a building, like moving hallways, we would probably defer to the property owner on those types of minor issues. But with a text amendment, there is no deference owed to an applicant. It's like the applicant is proposing a community center on behalf of the whole community. Everyone is going to use it. It's fine if they want to take the first crack at the design of the community center, but we don't give them any deference. It's everybody's center. So likewise, here, the text amendment belongs to the county. Any adopted text amendment becomes the county's new zoning ordinance. It will be the code used by all billboard companies in the county for years or even decades to come. So to have one company present the text amendment that they like without having broader consensus among the industry isn't how the county should proceed. As another analogy, allowing a text amendment to move forward with only the buy-in of one company would be like Pulte Homes drafting and presenting a master site plan that Lenar, D.R. Horton, and others would have to use in their communities for decades. That would make sense. So we think the best course of action here is to take the input from the community, but not take a vote at the end of the hearing. Instead, we urge the commission to continue the hearing, and then direct staff to host an open forum discussion where members of the industry can actually discuss the details of the text amendment. Put us all together in an open virtual room and see what type of consensus can be reached. We haven't had that type of open discussion for two years and not on this current iteration of the amendment. And for an example, just as an overview of some of Clear Channel's concerns, let me briefly restate our position on the current language. First, we believe that all digital billboards should have to go through a special permit process. Only some of them are required under the current version. Second, staff should establish a clear application procedure for the digital sign permits. This needs to be done well in advance of any approval, so there's an open, fair, and transparent permit process. Third, we agree spacing should be, for residential, should be increased to 500 feet. And fourth, a requirement for notice to adjacent cities and towns should be explicitly included into that text amendment rather than be incorporated by reference. Again, Clear Channel's not opposed to an entitlement pathway for digital billboards, but right now, the amendment has defects. The county needs greater consensus among the industry before it proceeds with an amendment to its zoning ordinance. So let's have an open forum for discussion to try to achieve that consensus.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any clarifying questions for Taylor? Thank you very much. None. Just want to make sure we haven't missed anybody. I'll ask our, are there any raised hands, or are there any additional people that would wish to speak?
Commissioner Arnett, Mark Mayer has asked to participate. He's unmuted.
Great. Go ahead, Mark, if you can.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
We can. We can. Go ahead when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Mark Mayer, and I am here on behalf of Scenic Arizona, whose mission for over 20 years has been to preserve and enhance the natural beauty of Arizona. We are here today to oppose the proposed billboard amendment, as it is not wanted by the public. It would increase visual blight along Maricopa County freeways, and it would undermine municipal billboard restrictions by allowing large and electronic billboards in their planning areas prior to annexation. In 19, excuse me, in 2005, Scenic Arizona commissioned an opinion poll by the respected De Burge firm, and the results were that Maricopa County residents opposed electronic billboards by an overwhelming 3 and 1/2 to 1 margin. The public clearly does not want these eyesores, and certainly the draft ordinance before you today is not the result of any hue and cry from the citizenry demanding such changes. This public sentiment has formed the basis of local billboard bans and restrictions throughout the valley for decades, and Maricopa County should not substitute its judgment for those local jurisdictions by allowing a smattering of county islands to be used as an end run around the regulations those jurisdictions have adopted. In particular, this ordinance would further exploit such islands along the Loop 202 and State Route 24 within the communities of Mesa, Gilbert, and Queen Crick, whose codes do not allow billboards at all. In the West Valley, communities that banned such as Peoria and Surprise could be similarly affected, particularly if such billboard allowances became an incentive to rezone county land just prior to annexation. Even in the few communities that did allow electronic billboards in the wake of being cash-strapped in the years after the 2009 Great Recession, the number was strictly limited and not open-ended as being proposed here. In sum, we urge you to stand up for the scenic quality of our state and the integrity of local governance and reject the draft amendment before you. And I'd like to add just a couple other brief comments. The map that we saw displayed earlier about where opponents lived, I don't think that's relevant in the sense that there are massive traffic flows on Maricopa County freeways. And so it's when you have everybody out in their cars, whether they're going from the north side to the south side, the west valley to the east valley, downtown to any of those locations and back, the relevance is as motor vehicleists that are driving on these freeways, seeing the billboards that come from all kinds of locations, not only in the valley, but traveling through Phoenix. And the other thing is I'd like to reiterate what others have said, this process where the, it's not just the regulated industry gets to write their own regulations, or at least the starting draft, it's only one regulated user does, and that's a really flawed process. So, and some, thank you for your consideration, and I can certainly answer any questions if you have some.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any clarifying questions? All right. Thank you. I'll just ask one more time, anyone with a hand raise, or anyone that we didn't get to, just to make sure.
Chairman Arnett, Dan Penton, we think that we have him connected.
Okay. Let's go ahead if you're there, Dan.
Hello. This is Sandy Hamilton, for Dan Penton.
Oh, okay.
I'm a resident, well, 5218 West Magdalena Lane, here in Levine. I'm just speaking as a resident. And I can see the commissioners on my computer screen. I just want to ask you to protect us. We rely on you to protect us, the voter. Protect us against the distracted driving that may occur because of this. Protect us against billboard blight. We have beautiful views of the mountains from the 202 here in Levine now. And protect us from the property value drop. It just seems to me that if we were to put this issue on the ballot, you really think it would pass? Anyway, thank you for that. Thank you for finally letting me speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry, we had some technical difficulties. Okay. Is that anyone else?
I'm not aware of anyone else at this time.
Okay. Great.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I missed one. Harvey Schulman.
Yes, can you hear me? It's Harvey Schulman.
We can, Harvey. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Everything I'm going to say is supported by detailed factual information. It's not just my opinion. First, I think you're getting ahead of yourselves, because if you approve this, you may be digging yourself in a hole that will be hard to climb out of, and years of litigation. That's because a couple months ago, the U.S. Supreme Court, in the case of City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising, said it will be deciding by June 2022 whether regular onsite business signs and off-premises billboard signs must have the same right to advertise under the same rules. So if you approve this proposal before the Supreme Court acts, you may be opening yourselves to all kinds of digital signs, not just billboards, but onsite premise advertising. And that's going to be hard to jump out of and cause a lot of litigation. I would urge you to wait and see how that plays out. Secondly, as other speakers have said, there's no trade-off requirement here. Almost every other place around the country, if someone wants to convert a non-digital board to digital, they have to take down two boards or three boards or more in order to make the digital conversion. You don't do that here. Even your proposal to remove undermounted lighting, you're giving applicant, you're giving billboard owners six years to do that, at a minimum. If somebody wants to convert one of their conventional boards to digital, why don't you make them at the same time change the lighting on all of their undermounted conventional boards? Also, I want to say that proposed standards for conversion are far too loose, even looser than the city of Phoenix digital standards, which have been regularly criticized as too loose and are now being challenged in court. For example, your proposed ordinance allows digital billboards to change images every eight seconds, and it allows those messages to be as bright as 300 nits. You can think of nits as something like watts. But the International Engineering Society, ANCI, which is the premier group in the United States, if not the world, for lighting, issued a report in 2019 that digital billboard messages should appear for at least eight seconds, not, excuse me, at least 20 seconds, not eight seconds, 20 seconds minimum. And IES also said that the brightness of digital boards in rural areas should not exceed 20 nits. You're proposing to allow 300 nits, 300 nits in unincorporated parts of the county. And to give you some perspective, 300 nits is about the brightness of nine or 10 full moons. What you might not know is that the typical existing conventional billboard in the Phoenix area has a brightness of about 30 to 50 nits. A 2010 study done by the U.S. Naval Observatory in Flagstaff of about 50 signs along Phoenix highways found that conventional billboards in this area were about 50 nits. We did a study last year, in 2020, of many We did a study last year in 2020 of many conventional billboards in Phoenix and found they were brightness of about 30 something nits. You are proposing to allow digital billboards to replace conventional billboards and increase the brightness by tenfold. Let me also say about.
If you would please conclude, we're way over time. If you would please conclude.
Yes, I know, but some of these points have not been made by any prior speakers and this is my only time to say anything.
I mean, I'm not being repetitive. We're giving everyone the opportunity to speak here. If you'd please conclude.
Yeah, well, some people have had four or five minutes other than the applicant. Anyway, I'm going.
You're going over for now, sir.
Also, the city of Phoenix allows the zoning department to reduce the brightness and increase the duration of messages. Yes, Phoenix has up eight seconds or 300 nits, but it also says that could be changed by the zoning authority. You don't even do that in your ordinance. Someone has already talked about residential properties. Have any of you ever stood in front of a digital billboard at 150 feet? And yet that's what you propose to allow people's homes to be in 150 feet of that? The thousand foot mess on distance is also way inadequate. Somebody passing on the highways would actually see six different messages in a one minute period as soon as they start seeing the billboard. I will finish by saying on what others said, this process is really bad. And the fact that I'm making these substantive points that others have not made and I'm limited to two minutes is really unfair. Let's have a real debate. Why don't you get the parties on all sides and let them go at it at a public forum for an hour? And instead of asking questions or not asking questions and letting facts be hidden, let everybody go at it and try to get the truth. As a prior speaker said, this proposal is not ready for a vote. It's factually wrong. It's legally wrong. You're going to get involved for litigation for years. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Technical team.
We're not aware of any others at this time.
Okay, perfect. Let's move on. Mr. Lally, a few minutes, if you would, please. I know we can't address every single point that's been made, but let me give you a few minutes before we discuss as a commission.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Bill Lally, 2525 East Calhoun Back Road here. You're right, there's a lot that was said today. I'll try to go through. I made some brief notes on some of the highlights. So let me just go through and give you a little perspective on this. So process, process, I think, was probably talked about more than anyone, anything. If you could go to the very first slide of the presentation. Let me remind sort of everybody, we've tried to be as transparent as possible. I think there were two members of the billboard industry that referenced, you know, their inability to participate in the process and/or that this was not a consensus among the industry. So all of those meetings you see up there, both of those members and/or their clients participated in every single one of those meetings and either verbally or sending letters before or after that I have in front of me with specific changes and comments on sections, attending all of those hearings and making similar comments. And so it's kind of unfair to say that we somehow prevented the industry from commenting on the text amendment because there have been hundreds, well, maybe not hundreds, maybe 100 changes to the text over the last three years, all of which were in response to either industry professionals and/or industry leaders and/or the community and stakeholders. And it's kind of tough because I'll read you the latest letter that we received from Clear Channel that just came in yesterday. So even though this text language has been out there for three weeks and the EROP process, everybody got noticed three weeks ago of the exact language that we'll be debating today. A new letter came in yesterday from Clear Channel and it requests a spacing to residential that should be increased to 500 feet. So keep in mind, today's Maricopa County standards for billboards is 150 feet. That's the current standard today. We're proposing not to change that. Well, let's rewind back in 2018. The exact same author of Clear Channel wrote a letter that says, "We're opposed to the recommendation by staff to increase the 150 foot distance to 400 feet. We believe the distance should remain at 150 feet, which has been proven sufficient for both the county and other jurisdictions around town." So not only have we given everybody the opportunities to comment, those comments are now changing at the last second wholly to slow up the process. That letter came with a request to continue today even though this process has gone through lots and lots of outreach, lots and lots of changes and lots and lots of revisions to accommodate those in the area who have commented. So the other comment about, well, Mr. Lally showing you areas of the valley that have the opposition and saying that they don't matter. No, the intent of that exhibit is to show you, just like every case that comes before this board, you're asked to ask, answer the question, which is the presentation in front of me, does it impact the surrounding property owners and how? How does it impact them? And so the intent of that exhibit is to show you where the billboards are located within the county and which ones could be repurposed or modified for digital and where a lot of the comments are coming from. For you to determine yourself are the impacted areas around these billboards, the property owners, the people that live in the area, are they the ones commenting or not? That's done on every single zoning case. I'm not saying that no one can comment. There's six inches of comments in the staff report from folks. All I'm trying to prove to you is the billboards that we're talking about are in areas where the people who reside, live and work near those billboards are not coming out in vast opposition against those. The astronomy industry was well represented today for a number of folks and they have positions about protection of their facilities around the valley, around the state. And that debate was happened at the legislature many, many years ago. That debate was gone through many committees at the legislature, many astronomers, many people came and testified. The legislature took tons of testimony on what parts of the state are appropriate for billboards and what parts of the state are not. They passed a law, it's the law of today that all cities have followed. This ordinance is following the state law as it relates to locations and protection of those facilities. The law also recommends eight seconds for flips. It recommends 300 nits. The city of Phoenix and all other jurisdictions around the valley have adopted those standards. Those standards, as what was done and approved by state law through many, many debates at the legislature are what are reflected in today's application in front of you today. Driver distraction, yeah, there were lots of reports that have now surfaced here at the last minute. I want to reference the one that everyone seems to refer to that talks about an Israeli study. Well, I honestly don't know anything about the Israeli study and I don't know if the roads and the conditions in Israel are the same as here in Maricopa County. So it's hard for me to trust a study that makes mention of a number of studies, but calls out Israel and calls about Alabama and Florida as the studies that we should follow. And I have no idea whether or not those studies have anything to do with Maricopa County or if it's a fair comparison. Now, we did the same kind of thing. We pulled a public records request from the city of Phoenix for the 44th Street area in urban Phoenix. And we asked for numbers of wrecks having increased over the years. And we got the same information as one of the callers did today. And we looked through that information to see, does it reflect a reason that have of increased traffic and/or wrecks that has anything to do with billboards? And the evidence and the information that we received from city of Phoenix and authored by ADOT as well is that, no, there's not even a category because the complaints and/or the situations of driver distractions from billboard is so slight that they don't even have a category as opposed to, let's say pedestrians or cell phone traffic or sun glare. There's a lot of other things that are in these police reports that talk about contributing to wrecks. Billboards was not a single one of them. Now, we also know the 44th Street and Indian School where a lot of people are referencing traffic inclusion also now, used to have an old gas station and car wash and now has a Chick-fil-A. So traffic has increased substantially over the years, which was led to, you know, more wrecks. I think every intersection in the valley has probably had more wrecks over the last five or six years. So I don't think that contributes to the finding, the absolute finding that billboards, digital billboards contribute to enhance wrecks. So driver distraction, so the setbacks were also awful. Also referenced here, the thousand foot setback that we are proposing here is actually an improvement from the thousand foot setback that's in the code today. It's the same as city of Phoenix. It's the same as most large jurisdictions. The 300 nits is exactly the same. The impact on drivers, so when we're talking about the development standards for this code, the impact on drivers and surrounding property owners will be mitigated with this new technology. At the end of the day, this code is doing exactly what most of the jurisdictions in the valley do. And I want to clarify, I know there was one caller that said that I said every jurisdiction in the valley does this and that's not what I said. I said every jurisdiction in the valley that allows billboards also allows digital billboards. There are a number of jurisdictions in town, Mesa, Gilbert, Chandler, Queen Creek, Peoria, Surprise, that don't allow billboards. But all of the ones who do, and there are quite a few, do allow digital billboards. The development standards are almost exactly the same in terms of the size, 14 by 48, thousand feet or more apart from each other, 300 nits, eight second turn times. So we are following the general consensus of the valley. All of those valley cities have followed the state law, which we are doing today. This is the best technology available today. Maricopa County will be groundbreaking and mandating this technology for digital movers. And at the end of the day, I'll quote one of the board members today, maybe the chairman, who referenced a staff report statement that just says, "The applicant has done everything that has been asked. If this process was not true and transparent and fair, I don't think staff could look you in the eye and say, over the three years and the hundreds of changes, could you actually say that this was not a transparent and fair process to the, all of the folks involved?" So, Mr. Chairman, board members, I know there's a lot of other issues that were talked about, but I'll end this by saying, we have the very latest technology deployed in this code. This code generally reflects almost every other code in the valley in terms of development standards. The process that we're promulgating here is a process that is allowed through counties and not cities. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lally. Probably shouldn't say as much, so I'm not quoted, but thank you anyway. Any questions or comments from the commission for the applicant before we close to public comment and discuss as a commission? All right, I'm not hearing any and I know we're going to have a lot of discussion here. We always reserve the right to call others back for, but at this point, I will close this discussion for public comment. Thank you, all of you that have been on the line with us today and have shared your information. There's, I know that this has just been a few hours here today, but literally we have, we have pages, hundreds and hundreds of pages of each of your comments of whoever has submitted things we've read through this, we take it serious. I'll turn this over to commission discussion if there's any questions for staff or any comments, but I at least want to say a couple of things because I know this is a passionate issue. We all see this from our perspective. Whatever we're fighting for, we will fight for that the most. What we're all, though, we are all people that care about our community. The people on this commission, I promise you, are serving because they care about our community. It was suggested otherwise, I just want to reiterate that. We also vote as well. We do. And we are residents of this committee, of this community. So we want what you want. We all want the same thing. I believe what this comes down to is, is taking this as a whole, do we want to continue advancing down this road of advertising and digital advertising? I agree with all of the comments made. I think it's ridiculous that there's such big signs that you have to read them, but you also don't have to read them. So who's at fault? The driver or the landowner? I don't know that. Cell phones. I get it. Do we need to pass a law to say to not drive, you have to drive safe? I think we should drive safe. Now, yes, we do. We can argue that. But is it the landowner's fault? That people are, but it's a great case. I think it was Mark Palzon that made the great case. It makes perfectly good sense. But it's also equally distracting. If there's a waterfall, if there's a pretty scene, or if there's something else or a building or a stadium, there's so many things. We live in a community and so this is a difficult, difficult discussion. I don't know the right answer, but here we have something in front of us that we need to, we need to consider, we need to vote on. I'm inclined to support what is there. I know the process hasn't been perfect, but it has been a process that it, there's always someone that's not going to agree. But I don't know that, that it has been unfair. That's just my opinion. But I welcome any comments or questions from the commission as to where we're at. Mr. Slosser, go ahead.
You calling me, Mr. Chairman?
Please, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I have a question of staff, but I'd first like to say that, sorry, I'm getting some feedback here. When, and it was the applicant's first exhibit, I think it was my first zipper meeting, this was my third year serving on this commission. And I think it was February 28th and these, there was a whole bunch of people there, it was at the other county building and all the billboard companies were there. By my count, the commissioners that are still serving on the commissioners' evening, Mr. Chairman, the chairman at the time, Commissioner Lindblom and Commissioner Montoya and myself. So I guess first of all, my question is for staff. Over these last three years collectively, how much time has county staff spent on this text amendment, just the ballpark? It has to be a huge amount of time. Darren, do you have a answer to that?
Mr. Chairman, I, yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Slosser, it would only be a ballpark, but we've had, you know, between clerical staff and planners reviewing and drafting language and setting up meetings. I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure we have the equivalent, the full time equivalent of a couple of months worth of work for a full time equivalent position. But it's just a ballpark figure.
Okay, all right. I know you can't answer that question, but it's a lot of time spent with everybody. Secondly, it baffles me. I've heard the same comment that I heard three years ago on February 28th from these other billboard companies back then that I'm hearing again today that this wasn't a fair process and that they didn't have any input and the applicant sort of clarified that with his rebuttal remark. But it just baffles me that that's not been the case. I find that hard to believe. My next thought is these astronomers and one gentleman mentioned these professional astronomers and they're the professor down at U of A. I have tremendous respect for their profession and astronomy really fascinates me. And, but, and I appreciate all their comments and concerns. What we have to keep in mind, and I think I'm correct in saying that the city of Phoenix, and I don't think it accounts for the surrounding municipalities or the county, but the city of Phoenix just overtook the city of Philadelphia for the fifth largest city in the nation. So we got to take the good with the bad and I'm not a scientist or, and these astronomers are a thousand times smarter than I am, but these billboards with however many hundreds of thousands of residences and commercial buildings and everything else that produces light in this metropolitan area. You know, I know it adds to it, but I question the amount that it actually impacts it. I'm almost done. I'm almost done. I guess the last thing is this, it's time for this application to move forward. It's been three years and when I heard it back three years ago, I didn't think it would take anywhere near this time to get through. I knew it was a complex issue and contentious issue, but it's taken three years and it's time to move forward. And with that being said, once everybody from the commission makes their statements and prepared to make a motion to approve, if the chairman's fine with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Let's not get too far ahead of ourselves, but thank you very much. I appreciate your comments and any other commission discussion. It'd be nice to know some of the concerns, well, we all have concerns, I think that would be safe to say.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Swart.
I'll be very brief. Mr. Peck, I'm going to put you on the spot. One of the speakers today mentioned that he was going to give us some facts and one of the facts that he gave us was a United States Supreme Court case that's, I guess, relevant to billboards. How could I arrive at it being a fact when it's not going to be decided until 2022? Could you help me with that?
You can't. You, I mean, you may anticipate what the court's going to do, but if we were to adopt an ordinance and that case comes in that raises questions with our ordinance, we would present that to you at the time and you would make a decision and we would talk about whether the ordinance needs to be amended, but we don't know how the court's going to decide. So I'm not sure why you would factor that in. In most cases, the concern that the court has with billboards is whether you are regulating content and there's nothing about the text amendment that deals in any way with contact, with content. If the synopsis that was given, my guess is correct, my guess is the argument is that you can't differentiate between onsite and offsite advertising because that goes to content and if that were the case, the odds are we'd be looking more at our onsite ordinance than our offsite ordinance, but again, you really can't factor that in at this point unless you feel it's appropriate to wait until the court comes out.
I do not. Thank you.
I'd like to know where some of the other commissions forward or where we're at on this. Any other thoughts? We know where. Well, okay, if there's no more discussion, I will tell you from my perspective, I really appreciate all those that have spoken today. I also, as one that spends a lot of time outdoors, an ideal situation would be, we don't have light pollution and we don't have these challenges, but we do. It would be nice to not have the need for so much housing, but we do, so we still keep building on empty land. That's just what we do as a community. I may not like it, but if a landowner wants to do things, now, the question is, is should we advertise or should we not? I think that's a fair question, but we do advertise. We do have billboards and I think what staff has done along with the applicant has said, "There's all the concerns with digital, we're comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it." Now, whether we should advertise or not is a whole different deal. I spent a long time in California and it got so crazy, they eventually around Disneyland said, "Let's stop this, this is crazy." Now, that's a whole, that's a whole separate question, but that's not what we're doing here today. We're talking, we do advertise as a community and I don't disagree that it's not, there's a safety component, but that's, so as a community, we have to make these hard decisions. So, last time, any other, anyone like to weigh in before I maybe entertain a motion for Mr. Slosser?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McGee.
Please, go ahead.
As the author of the texting ban bill, there's obvious parallels here, which I have noted, but I wanted to make a couple of comments, not necessarily in support of my vote, or I just wanted to say that I think it is pretty disingenuous for the, for the billboard companies who are already well-established, the big guys, to pile on with a completely divergent set of interests in opposing this text amendment from the citizens, many of whom were my former constituents who have come before this commission. That being said, there were a lot of concerns raised about the process and I do think the process from the get-go was fatally flawed. It got, it got off according to policy, according to the wishes of the board as a request of a specific business to change the criteria to allow them to do business. And I'm very supportive of small businesses and I, I get that, but if, I know from the many meetings I've stakeholdered down at the Capitol, that if you get off on the wrong foot, it is incredibly difficult to get back on the right foot. And I think in this instance, the process itself doesn't allow for that. I think it needs to be a larger conversation. I think there need to, everybody does need to be at the table at the same time and with the same facts and with the same information. And I hate to do that to staff, but, or suggest that to staff because within the confines of that allowed process, they did more than they were asked for, as did the petitioner, Becker Boards. So, but it was not the right process, not the right place to have a conversation. I base this on my experiences down at the Capitol when I was a brand-new legislature with the processes that went on to, to establish the Arizona law. And that being said, I just wanted people to take that into account. I think the whole request needs to be handled differently as a general text amendment as opposed to a request generated, a text amendment generated by a specific business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just so I'm clear, your concern is more the process, but does it also have concerns with, like if this did go through another process, would it, would the, would the text amendment look drastically different than what you see today?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your question. I don't want to necessarily take up the commission's time with specifics, but the example would be multiple amendments that were made and then shopped out to, shopped out to specific groups based on how the process was, was constructed. So, all the stakeholder groups are, are working off a different set of facts, a different text amendment, and we saw that representative, represented today and yesterday with the emails that came on board from both in opposition and in support. So, when you start down that road and you don't have representatives working off the same version at the same time for a more generalized purpose, this is not for the benefit of Becker Boards, it should be for the benefit of Maricopa County voters and people who live in this county and in accordance and more in alignment with those wishes as, and I think that would have dialed down the opposition from the big boys who kind of, I feel like, have what they want and don't want anybody to let anybody else in. This was a very, very hard, very complex issue for me, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, but if you don't get off on the right foot, it's very hard to get back on the right foot. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I agree with you. So, thank you for your comments. Any other discussion from the commission? Well, I'm not hearing any, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion then, Mr. Slosserless. I don't know where this will go, but we'll see.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, I echo everybody's comments and appreciate everyone that spoke today and understand their sentiments. With that, the case number itself and looking at it supports part of my argument, it's the case number TA 2018-001, and with that, I would make a motion to approve with, with the conditions.
And just to clarify this motion, I know there was a bit of a list of clarifications, housekeeping, typos, those things. Does, does this motion include all of those clarifications?
Yeah.
But I think it's per group. And I didn't get a chance to ask the applicant, but I'm assuming that, should they, they're okay with all those. It's mostly typos and a few clarifications, so just making sure that's all part of the motion as presented by staff.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as approved as presented.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, is there a second? I will second the motion. If there's not one, I'll second, just so we can call for a vote. There's a motion and there's a second. Rosalie, would you please do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Gress?
No.
Commissioner McGee?
No.
Commissioner Slosser?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Swart? And Chairman Arnett?
Yes.
Chairman, we have an approval by a vote of three to two.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your participation in that process. This now moves the Board of Supervisors, but thank you very much. Let me just double-check my agenda real quick to make sure I haven't missed anything.
Mr. Chairman, it's Wayne. Could we get Commissioner Denzison back in even if it's just for the adjournment so the record is clear that he only stepped out because of the recusal? So there's no court.
I see him on the screen, but if you can unmute and just verify for us.
No, it's fine, as long as he's here, thank you. I can't.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other things before we adjourn from staff? All right, thank you, everyone, for your, for your hard work and all your participation in this. Thank you very much. Have a great day.